Morning.
Morning Commissioner Ellis, can you give us a sound check please?
Hi.
Do you have one to go to?
I want to Commissioner Houseman, if you give us a sound check please.
Hello.
Yeah alright, can you get it loud and clear?
New computer.
Closer for me to be able to.
I'm trying to broadcast it.
Just wanted to make sure it was ten o'clock.
Morning and welcome to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recess meeting. Today is October twenty first, twenty twenty, hour ten o'clock AM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for purposes of quorum.
Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Houseman. Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
I'm present too.
Commissioner Lee Morris. Commissioner Ellie Hall.
Present.
Vice Chairman Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Joe Carr.
Present.
Commissioner Morris was on the screen, but he didn't say present, but he was there. He is there.
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, please rise wherever you are for purposes of education followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this day. We pray now your peace and your power upon those who are gathered. Bless them now, give them your direction and your wisdom. We pray now for those who protect and serve or serving during this election. We ask you have a hand of protection upon those volunteers. Lord God, we thank you now, it's in your name we humbly pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag. The United States. The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk.
On page two, consent agenda. Two zero dash zero seven one four, adoption of the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item desired, item will be moved to the recess meeting agenda for separate consideration. This is Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed for separate consideration as requested by Commissioner. Bottom of page five. Two zero dash zero seven nine, finance, ratification of the September twenty twenty grant activity report.
Alright, anything else for the consent agenda? Alright, if not, I'll enter a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move.
Second.
Properly moved. Cast your votes please, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall. Vice Chair Arrington.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. There is an item to be added to today's recess meeting agenda. On page two of the add-on memo, two zero dash zero seven seven zero, administrative hearing officer. Sheriff Arrington has nominated Otis Williams S R to replace Calvin Brock Blackburn the third to a two-year term.
As an add-on?
Yes.
Alright, that would require five affirmative votes. Motion to approve. I'll move approve with a second. Is there a second? Alright, properly moved to second. Alright, five affirmative votes, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morris. Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
That's five, yeah.
Thank you. That's added to the agenda?
Added to today's recess meeting agenda.
Okay.
On page seven. Recess meeting agenda. Two zero dash zero seven three four, adoption of the recess meeting agenda. This is Chairman and members of the board, we have two items to be revised today. On page eleven. Two zero dash zero seven five three, county manager, request ratification of countywide emergency procurement. This item was revised to include the updated emergency procurement summary. On page twelve. Two zero dash zero seven five seven, real estate and asset management. Request approval to increase training authorities to provide prevent and corrective maintenance repair services at the Fulton County Municipal Jail at Union City. This item is revised to include the correct dollar amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents.
Okay, any other items for the agenda for today?
That's all I have.
Alright, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recess meeting agenda as amended.
So move.
Take one of those as a second, properly moved and seconded, Commissioner, let's vote please, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis. Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero nine. Two zero dash zero seven three five, ratification of minutes, recess meeting minutes, September sixteen. Special call meeting post-agenda minutes, October second, and regular meeting post-agenda minutes, October seventh, twenty twenty.
The motion.
I move.
Second. Alright, let's vote please, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Mr. Carr.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero nine. Two zero dash zero seven three six, presentation of proclamations and certificates. Proclamation recognizing fire chief I David Daniels appreciation day sponsored by Commissioner Carr.
Okay, alright, thank you. Guess I'm gonna read this proclamation here. Whereas the National Fire Heritage Center is the result of a study done by the US Fire Administration where it identified a need to collect, preserve, and provide access to the historical records of the fire service and fire protection disciplines in the United States. And whereas I David Daniels served as Fulton County Fire Chief from two thousand and one to two thousand and six and is being inducted into the National Fire Heritage Center's class of twenty twenty-one Hall of Legacies, Legends, and Leaders, and will be the first living African American to ever be inducted. And under his leadership and mentorship, fifteen former members of the Fulton County Fire Department rose to the rank of Fire Chief in jurisdictions across the United States, including DeKalb and Calhwood counties in Georgia, as well as the cities of Baltimore, Maryland, Battle Creek, Michigan, and College Park, Georgia, my hometown. Whereas Chief Daniels served on several state and national committees, including an appointment to the Georgia Fire Training Standards Council by former Lieutenant Governor Mark Taylor, and he is a member of the National Safety Council and served on their Board of Directors and is a current member of both the Delegates Committee and their Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. And this honor is bestowed upon him during the National Fire Safety Awareness Month when residents have a chance to learn how they can make their lives safer while also learning about the history of national fire emergencies. And whereas Chief Jack Daniels is married to Miss Angela Daniels, and they are the parents of six children, grandparents to ten grandchildren, and they are residents of the Cedar Grove Community in the great city of South Fulton. Now therefore it be resolved that Fulton County Board of Commissioners commends the continued accomplishments of Chief Daniels and celebrates his induction into the National Fire Heritage Centers class of twenty twenty-one Hall of Legacies, Legends, and Leaders, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, October twenty twenty, as Fire Chief I David Daniels Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia, from the Board of Commissioners.
Alright, thank you very much Commissioner Carr, and congratulations Chief Daniels. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottom of page seven, public hearing, two zero dash zero seven three seven, public comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment, registration online to join the public comment portion of the zone call or can submit public comment in by email or filling out form located on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Speakers with granted up to two minutes each, the public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed thirty minutes.
We have one public comment that was submitted via email. Comment from Donna Renfro Lawson of Atlanta. God morning, elected, selected, and rejected publicly concerned officials and citizens. County Attorney Patrice Perkins Hooker has asked me not to contact her or her staff. Who are these people? Are they aware that their jobs are under attack through intimidation tactics? Do you think C A P P Hooker has forgotten that she is an employee that started and continues to pursue an argument about my ability to cast a ballot per exposing the messiness in administration? I can't vote, I won't vote until FOCO's leadership resolves this desperate management approved and utterly ridiculous unethical low staff morale initiated, poorly defined integrity and scapegoating situation involving me, Donna Renfro Lawson is properly addressed. In addition, my sympathy is extended to all candidates inclusive of VP hopeful on Team Biden Kamala Harris because her AKA Sora might have caused her votes. How sad, really, really sad. Next subject, was the purpose of employment for Pamela Rochelle in regards to library leadership? Does she not respond as anticipated to a very needed department? A requested circulation policy has not been brought forth in regards to the mobile devices or Chromebooks purchased for specific usage in the twenty twenty census campaign. Where's the inventory that is reported to have a fifty-three thousand dollar value? That is the only comment we have submitted via email.
Okay, thank you.
We have attendees.
Okay.
That wish to speak, we have Hamita Embry.
Ms. Embry.
Yes, good morning, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, good morning Chair and members of the Commission. I am Hamita Embry, Executive Director of AFSPY Georgia, which is the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. I come as one, I also stand as one point six million members. I am also the Financial Secretary for the Atlanta North Georgia Labor Council. Locally AFSPY Georgia, we represent employees at Atlanta Public Schools, the City of Atlanta, Grady Hospital, Southside Medical Centers, and right here in Fulton County. I come to the today to express concerns regarding Fulton County's handling of COVID nineteen as it relates to its employees. My office has received several phone calls of concern. While we appreciate and understand the need for medical privacy, we would like to assist in developing a process where employees who are known to have been exposed to COVID nineteen are promptly notified. In many instances, this has not happened and employees have subject subjected themselves and their families to COVID nineteen. We have helped to develop processes and protocols in other public agencies that have helped to reduce the spread, enhance communication, and foster greater confidence in the protection of our community and employees. We will reach out to the appropriate Fulton County representative in an effort to address this issue, and we will keep you Chair and the Commission posted. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
We next have Sheila Hamilton.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Greetings Commissioners, thank you so much for the work you do on behalf of the citizens of Fulton County. We are very appreciative of your hard work and your dedication to improve our lives. This morning I am coming to speak to you on behalf of victims of the system, a grassroots organization formed to advocate on behalf of the marginalized and disenfranchised. I have a personal concern this morning because I have a relative who is a detainee in the Fulton County Jail who requested COVID testing and was denied the test. The nurse informed the detainee that he could not have the test because he did not have any symptoms. I have been watching the Fulton County Commission meetings and have attended those that were face-to-face from March until the present day. And I have watched Dr. Paxton's team present their presentations on COVID for the public as well as the jail. And it was stated that the detainees could not be forced to take the COVID nineteen test, but I am very concerned that when a detainee requests the test, why are they denied by the nurse? We all know that you can be asymptomatic when you have COVID, and therefore why if a budget has been set for COVID testing in the jail, are detainees not allowed to have a test done upon request? My other concern is we thank the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registration for going into the jails in Fulton County and registering those eligible to vote. But today the detainees do not know whether they will be getting absentee ballots so that they can cast their vote in this very critical election that will make a big dent or a difference in the lives of citizens throughout the United States. They have been stripped of their rights, but this right is a right that they, all citizens, deserve if you are eligible to vote. So I, my question today is.
Ma'am, you've exceeded your time, so give me another fifteen seconds.
Thank you, what can you all do to answer my questions? Because they are critical questions that affect the lives of those who are marginalized. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Chairman, we have one more.
Okay.
Last but not least, we have proclamation recipient, Mr. David Daniels.
Commissioners, I would like to thank you all this morning for the proclamation and Chairman Pitts and the remainder of the board, but especially my Commissioner, Commissioner Joe Carr. I really appreciate your consideration, and I feel that it's worthy of mentioning that there are a couple of people who aren't on the board currently, but they really had a lot to do with me getting to where I am today, and that would be the late Commissioner Emma Darnell and the former Commissioner and now my Mayor, Bill Edwards, who were so supportive of me and the organization while I was the Fire Chief. And last but not least, I would encourage the Commission and the county as a whole, to the extent it has the opportunity to do so, to to write the story of the Fulton County Fire Department. Because I don't think a lot of folks know how successful it was and how successful a lot of the folks in the organization are even today. And it would be a story worth telling, I'd be happy to help in any way that I can. Again, thank you so much for your kindness, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Alright, Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No further speakers.
Okay, continue.
On page eight, county managers renewal items under open and responsible government.
Okay, let me make a suggestion here, open for discussion on this. There are fourteen items for renewal. And in the interest of time, if we, I'd like to take them all with one vote if there's no objections. There's one that we may want for the public to hear, and that is the NAFCARE twenty twenty contract renewal based upon the amount. But any objections to that? The next fourteen are all renewals.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Houseman.
No objections, but I agree that the NAFCARE should be done separately.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Hall, I agree NAFCARE needs to be done separately as well.
I think also the the food services contract one is pretty substantial. I'd like to hear that one separately too.
That's air mark, okay?
Air mark.
Any others? Alright, so on page nine, we'll hold for separate discussion. Twenty dash zero seven four one. And also on page nine, twenty dash zero seven four three, separate discussion. The other twelve, Madam Clerk, if you would just sound just caption quickly on each of those, and we'll take one vote for those twelve.
Okay, on page eight, two zero dash zero seven three eight, real estate and asset management, press pool to renew an existing contract to provide onsite general landscaping, maintenance, and lawn care services. Two zero dash zero seven three nine, real estate and asset management, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide highest quality medical and clinical general cleaning services for selected Fulton County health facility.
Mention of vendor.
Two zero dash zero seven four zero, real estate and asset management, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide the highest quality janitorial services for the government center complex and justice center facility. On page nine, under justice and safety, two zero dash zero seven four two, sheriff, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide uniforming here to the sheriff's office. On health, under health and human services.
You missed zero.
Two zero dash zero four four, public works, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide fire hydrant maintenance and repairs. On page ten, two zero dash zero seven four five, public works, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide manhole, prays, break, and accessories. Two zero dash zero seven four six, public work, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide water, to provide sewer system, chemical root services. Two zero dash zero seven four seven, public work, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide sewer system, cleaning, and manhole camera inspection services. Two zero dash zero seven four eight, public works, request approvals renewing existing contract to provide sanitary sewer easement maintenance in both North and South Fulton service area. On page eleven. Two zero dash zero seven four nine, public works, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide water valve. Two zero dash zero seven five zero, public works, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide water meter reading services. And two zero dash seven five one, senior services, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide dignified professional burial services as a last resort for any deceased person declared indigent or unclaimed Fulton County resident in the death occurred within Fulton County.
Move approval.
Alright, on those twelve, I'll second those twelve.
I just wanted to make certain that everybody understood before the vote that the renewals called by the clerk include the vendors referenced and described in the agenda items.
Thank you. Alright, properly moved and seconded on those twelve, let's vote please, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington.
I'm saying.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Those. Then are approved unanimously. Now back to.
Page nine.
Page nine. Madam Clerk.
Two zero dash zero seven four one, sheriff, request approval to renew an existing contract to provide inmate food services.
Okay, Mr. Matt, who's going, Madam COO or who's going to?
Austin Adams and or Mark Adger if they're available.
Mr. Adams. Colonel Adger.
Colonel Adger's here.
Mr. Adams.
Alton, Mr. Adams had to step off for one second, he'll be back shortly, please apologize for that.
Do you want to start Colonel Adger?
Um. Basically, all I have to say about the request to renew is that Aramart has provided all the services that that are looking, did contract, and they've provided them adequately. I don't have any concerns about their ability to continue to provide.
Alright, go online. Sir Adams is back in the room, sir.
Okay, Mr. Adams, we're on the Aramart contract.
Okay.
Alright. Do you want to explain what we have here?
Yeah, the Aramart contract, and I and I believe Colonel Adger is on as well, but the the Aramart contract is our renewal for for the the annual contract. Aramart provides food services at the at the Fulton County jail facilities. And I'm not sure what the what the terms of the renewal are in terms of which one this is, but 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 Aramart has been providing food services to the jails for the last couple of years. We have an annual review with them, we haven't had any issues. And in fact, one of the enhancements or changes that we've made to the contract this year was to provide additional special meals for individuals with diabetes, high blood pressure, and and for religious religious purposes. So is there a specific question I can answer for you Commissioner?
Uh, yes, I guess Adger as well. Overall, I'm okay with renewing the contract, and I see the price per meal is going up slightly. It's like only four cents to a dollar eighteen per meal. I've gotten calls, several calls from constituents about the fact that there was a charge for things as 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 such things as salt and pepper at the jail that an inmate actually has to pay for that. And I think it's a, you know, nominal fee, you know, five or ten cents, but I was very surprised that inmates would have to pay for salt or pepper or for ketchup. I'd assumed that that would come with a meal if someone requested that. That I do not like, and I don't think, you know, for what we're paying that we should, that that there's some people who are incarcerated whose families cannot afford to put money on the books as they call it. I know that's what they used to call it, but I don't like that, and I would like to see, you know, that's one enhancement that I would like to see changed in this contract in terms of fairness for all. Because again, everyone can't necessarily afford to fund someone while they are incarcerated. So I would like to see that changed, and I'd like to see if they'd be willing to give us some flexibility on that. And I know there's, it looks like there's a three and a half percent increase here in the contract amount. But I think at the least that those condiments should be provided with the meals, and I don't think that's unreasonable. So I want to hear your feelings on that, and that's what I'd like to see as an enh- as an enhancement.
My initial response is I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the fact that there was an additional cost for condiments. And so what I will do, I'll work with Felicia, we'll go back to Aramart and see if we can amend and make sure that things like that are included in the contract, they seem to be pretty nominal. So I think that's a perfectly reasonable request Commissioner, I was not aware that that individuals are being charged for salt and pepper and condiments, but I'll work with Felicia, we'll go back and revisit it with Aramart and and then report back to you accordingly.
Let me, let me add, because I think there's a misconception here on the condiments. Aramart is not charging for condiments. Contract requires our healthy meals. And because of such, condiments such as salt and pepper, pepper gets caught up with salt unfortunately, but but the salt is especially problematic, and those are individuals who are suffering from hypertension and other pre-existing conditions. Let me say this, since we, since we changed the diet here at the jail several years ago, we've been able to reduce and significantly improve the health of the individuals eating those meals. So I just want to be clear that Aramart is not charging for additional condiments. The condiments are being supplied through the commissary vendor who has it on their menu of items that inmates can buy along with upgraded toilet paper and other hygiene items. So Aramart is not charging for additional condiments.
Understood.
And they're providing heart-healthy meals as per the contract.
And I get that, and I think that's a good idea. We want inmates to be as healthy as possible.
And there has been a significant increase in that.
What I would like to see is if there is a request for that, then there not be a charge. And I think that would be fair. I understand what you're trying to do, and we want people as healthy as possible, so I do get that. But again, if there's a request for that, I don't think there should be a charge for that, again. And I don't think it's enough salt being poured in there to, you know, to give someone high blood pressure. I'm assuming it's the small, tiny packs. I don't know, but again, that's what I'd like to see, that to be available without a charge.
Okay.
I agree wholeheartedly. That is, I mean, we can provide heart-healthy meals and still provide salt and pepper on the side. I mean, that should be mandatory. That should, it sounds like Aramart isn't providing any salt and pepper, and the only way that it is available is through the commissary, and that should not be the case. Salt and pepper should be available with every meal that is served, period.
Okay, Colonel Adger, Mr. Adams, you've heard what the two Commissioners are saying, so y'all can discuss that, but salt and pepper is not included in this contract, so, but I think that they've made a good point on the salt and pepper as a separate issue. But on this particular.
I'll work with Colonel Adger and come back with the recommendation.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion on this particular contract.
Well, I think you're in part of this contract. I also have questions about the minority participation. On this contract.
Vice Chair?
Minority participation, lack of minority participation.
All right, can anyone address minority participation on this contract?
Yes, this is Felicia. It is forty-nine percent.
Forty-nine percent?
Yes.
Okay, and that doesn't fluctuate, because I know we got complaints in the past about that fluctuating.
No, it's forty-nine percent.
And we have contract suppliers to show that that is the case?
Sir, we check this contract quarterly. We monitor this contract very aggressively.
All right, well, I think, I know salt and pepper is part of this contract. Salt and pepper should be included with every meal, whether it's heart-healthy or not.
If it's, I would support it. If it's requested. I think if it's requested, it should be part of the contract, if an inmate requests it. And I get what you're trying to do in terms of health, but I think that's a basic standard for a meal as well, if someone requests it.
Just what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington?
I'm here.
Mr. Card?
I vote yes with a commitment to attempt to put that in there. Yes.
I vote yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Three, Sheriff, request an existing contract to provide physical and mental health services to inmates at the Fulton County Jail and other locations.
All right, not Commissioner. Mr. Adams, Colonel Adger?
Yes, we have a presentation to talk specifically to Navcare.
Then we'll have questions after your presentation, okay?
Great. Madam Clerk, can you bring it up for us? Thank you. Great, thank you. In January of 2019, actually, we got approval from the Board of Commissioners in December of 2018. We agreed with Navcare to provide services, medical services at the Fulton County Jail, which includes all of the personnel, medication, and services for a period of nine years with annual renewal. This specific agenda item requests approval for the third extension with a total of twenty-five point one million dollars in 2021 in the 2021 budget. As I mentioned, it includes medical services and supplies for all three of Fulton County's jail locations. Next slide, please. And I will tag team with Colonel Adger on this, but one of the things that was part of the agreement with Navcare was the development of a very specific set of metrics and a governance process to ensure, in fact, that we were making the kind of progress we anticipated and needed in terms of medical care at the jail. And in fact, when Navcare took over, we were in the process of triaging some of the challenges we had had with our previous two vendors. Navcare overall has met all of the targets that we set for them, and in most ways has actually exceeded expectations. We've increased the early diagnosis of pre-existing conditions that includes diabetes, high blood pressure, hepatitis A, and others that we were not, in fact, catching before Navcare came on board. They've increased their pace of responding to in-house illnesses, and then where necessary, ensuring that there's timely transport to a Grady Hospital in the event that the individual needs additional services. Our response times are down in terms of responding to inmate requests and need for services, and outcomes have actually improved across the system. Colonel Adger was mentioning, in addition, obviously, to things like diet, the ability to analyze and to treat an ailment as quickly as possible has allowed us to improve overall outcomes across the system, and these outcomes are presented on a monthly basis as part of our operating governance process, and then once a quarter, we present it to an executive forum, which includes the leaders of the county. Let me stop there. Colonel, do you want to comment on the health results at this point?
I would just say, compared to our last vendor and these same services and outcomes, that, as you have already stated, there's been a vast improvement, but not only in the outcomes, but in the way those outcomes have been achieved, in that the Navcare staff and the jail security staff have pretty much worked hand in glove in ensuring that Navcare has access to their patients, that the inmates have access to care in a manner which improves the outcomes across the system. So I would just add that.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. One of the results of COVID-19 has been a significant spread of the virus in a number of correctional facilities around the state and around the country. And so in March, Colonel Adger and his team instituted a number of very specific protocols to manage the spread of the virus. But for that to work, they actually had to partner very, very, very well with Navcare, because Navcare was responsible for helping to support some of the quarantine protocols in terms of individuals coming in, how much time they would spend in quarantine, when they would be tested, when those results would in fact allow them to be moved to the general population. And so as a result of that, we've seen the kinds of results that I'll talk to in a minute. The second thing that Navcare did was deploy and manage the use of the rapid testing machine, which we got from the Fulton County Department of Health. And we were the first jail in the state to actually deploy that as part of our protocol when it came to quarantine and to testing individuals and to determining whether they, in fact, were infected with COVID. And that's allowed us, quite frankly, to not only understand who we had in quarantine, but to move those individuals faster through that process in a way that's safe for them and safe for the individuals who are part of the general population. And managing COVID-19, Colonel Adger and his team, working with Navcare and others and the Board of Health, have actually produced what I'd describe as kind of best practice results when it comes to managing the spread and the potential impact of COVID. Since mid-March, Navcare has tested more than 2,000 individuals. We had a hundred and seventy, a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred and seven individuals who were confirmed as positive. All of those individuals have recovered and have either been returned to the general population or in fact have been released from the Fulton County Jail. As of October nineteenth, Monday, the jail has no confirmed cases of COVID at the jail at this time. Next slide, please.
And Alton, if I could add something on the COVID response. Commissioners, I heard this morning on the public comment about an advocate indicating that an inmate had requested COVID testing and was refused. I jumped on the phone immediately and spoke with Navcare to the HSA, and she assures me that their staff will be clear, absolutely clear, that anyone requesting COVID testing will get COVID testing after they've been processed into the jail. So there should not be an instance where someone requesting COVID testing does not get COVID testing. We are really high and advocate COVID testing throughout the system.
Thank you, Colonel. The, one of the ways to measure and manage the performance of a medical provider at the jail is accreditation. And as an organization, Colonel, I'll let you remind us what NCHP stands for, but it's basically the national organization that accredits healthcare systems and correctional facilities. The process itself requires a detailed audit of policies and procedures, a review of patient outcomes for the previous couple of years, and a plan to actually address any deficiencies that were identified in the audit. Our audit, the Fulton County Jail audit, was conducted in March of 2020. There were a few opportunities that were identified for improvement. The Navcare, working with the jail, but led by Navcare, identified the specific things that needed to take place, addressed those, submitted a plan, and in August of 2020, we regained accreditation for the Fulton County Jail system. Additionally, last year, we had an audit, an internal audit by Anthony Nick and his team of Navcare, looking at similar things as were identified in the NCHP audit. And we also had a review by the GAO, and so this has been one of the more audited, more reviewed contracts, and in terms of its impact, looked at by three different areas. And Navcare has passed and been able, in this case, like I said, to regain accreditation. Colonel, do you want to comment on that, as you had been there before we had accreditation?
Yes, and as you mentioned, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare came in, and not only did they look at the operations, but they interviewed both the medical professionals working for Navcare and the security staff working at the jail. On the exit interview that I did with the lead auditor, she indicated to me that it's very rare for an institution of our size where there is such a high level of working together in order to accomplish access to care for inmates. And she said it seems like everywhere she went into jail, everyone was echoing the mantra that inmates are entitled to access to care, and that's what we strive for here. And in partnership with Navcare, I think we've done it at a higher level than it's ever been done before. And I've had several providers over my tenure here with the Sheriff's Office, and it's never been this fluid an operation between medical and security staff in getting inmates proper medical attention.
Thank you, Colonel. And then next slide, please. So in terms of looking at at least three big measures of Navcare's performance. One, improving and tracking and reporting on outcomes. Two, managing through COVID-19, and with a caveat, we're not through it yet. So we continue to work with them, and obviously, the jail is working with them to ensure we continue to be very diligent about the things we do there. In fact, we've asked for, and we may be receiving, a second rapid testing machine that's going to give us even more flexibility and the ability to test individuals, to test more individuals. And then finally, regaining accreditation in an environment which has been obviously challenging for all in 2020 is, I use the word impressive, but they have more than done what we had expected from them. As importantly, they work, Navcare works very collaboratively with jail leadership, with the Board of Health, with county management in terms of the ongoing governance meetings that we have and the reports that they generate for us. And so it really is a partnership in terms of getting after the things that matter to keep individuals at the jail healthy. So based on that, we recommend and support the 2021 extension for Navcare as a provider of medical services for the Fulton County Jail system. Happy to take any questions.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, first, I just want to ask, because I noticed that the majority of the sheriff's contracts are coming out of the Sheriff's Department budget, but this particular one is actually showing on page, packet page three eighty-three, that it's coming out of the non-agency fund. And so my question is, why isn't it being paid out, why isn't the money in the Sheriff's Department budget and this contract actually being paid out of the Sheriff's Department budget? To show some realistic budgeting controls and actually show the realistic expenditures of what's happening through the Sheriff's Department budget.
So Commissioner Hall, that was, it was moved to, it was moved last, when we renewed the contract in part because of some of the challenges that we had had in terms of the governance process. I will say, though, that in terms of the way Colonel Adger and I and Navcare work, where the money is being paid for has actually never been an issue in terms of the way we've approached going after and ensuring that Navcare is doing their job. And so I know there's discussion about whether it should be moved. What I will say to you is that in terms of the way we operate and the way we work collaboratively and as a team, the line item or the category of the department's budget has never been an issue in terms of us being able to work together to ensure that Navcare is doing their job.
My question is not based on whether it's an issue between the county and county manager's office or the Sheriff's Department or anyone else. My question is a budgeting controls question and just good accounting practices that things be paid for out of the budget by which they're being used, so that we have an accurate and realistic accounting of what each department is spending on their resources, especially a contract of this magnitude to the tune of, what is it?
Twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million dollars. So that's why I asked the question. So that's why I asked the question.
Just a minute, I think the manager wants to weigh in. I think it's a legitimate question, so the manager wants to weigh in.
Yes. Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall. This was an intervention, for lack of a better term, that the board directed to be taken after two or three false starts on previous contracts, problems, non-performance, poorly negotiated, litany of issues. And I think the movement then of the funding and then the responsibility to negotiate, obviously in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department, was seen as a better approach. But I think your point is also well taken, that in the end, it is a Sheriff's Department responsibility and a Sheriff's Department expense. But that's the logical reason that this was done several years ago at the direction of the board.
So what is the, what's the problem with allocating it directly to the Sheriff's Budget? I think that's what she's asking, what's the issue with that?
There really isn't one. So it could be changed in the 2021 budget.
Yes. So the bidding process will remain the same, just once, I mean, it's a great question. It should be allocated to the Sheriff's Budget.
And if you think about it now, we're into, we're a couple, three years into a nine-year contract. So bidding it absent a performance follow-up is not even going to be an issue.
Right. Is that correct, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, yes.
To the Sheriff's Budget, so we'll know.
Yes, thank you for that, Chairman. That's exactly what I'm talking about. And Dick, you led me to, you mentioned some issues. And so that led me to my next questions. If you refer to packet page 392, where it's showing, what are these? It looks like it's an evaluation of services. There is a, there are a couple of questions on here that were answered in the survey that have some negative statements. If you look at one in particular, and you can't, I can't see it clearly on the page, but it looks like it is number, it is, oh, it doesn't have a number, but it says business And then it only has, no, I don't, that might be it. It has, number two is what it was rated, it was rated a two. And in the paragraph, it says, "The medical director has failed to provide requested Grady reports provided twice a day. On another occasion, when she was requested to have an inmate COVID tested, as I followed up on a response for an attorney on a Saturday, she responded, 'I'll see if I have a provider that can locate the testing materials. This same unprofessional behavior has become a frequent behavior as reported on several occasions by security staff. I myself have had to apologize to the inappropriate behavior for both administrators, I'm not going to name the names, but they're in there, on more than one occasion. NAF Care's internal administration professionalism has become absent and the inappropriate behavior continues to be demonstrated among," and I can't see the rest of it because I printed it and you have to scroll through the screen to actually read the entire statement. But that's one that caught my eye. And then the second one was under contractors key personnel. And in parentheses, it says, "credentials slash experience appropriate, effective supervision management available as needed." It says, "NAF Care has demonstrated a lack of eagerness to fill key vacant positions in a timely manner to ensure appropriate administration coverage as evidenced by the AHSA positions remaining vacant for five months during two separate contract years without reimbursement to the county for the vacant positions on two separate occasions." So there are some major issues apparently happening. And I want to know if the people who are responsible for managing this know about these issues and what is being done about these issues? Because it looks like they've been going on for quite some time. So this, this presentation is a little strange and odd to be saying all these great things when we have these issues going on behind the scenes. And I want to also add that I was in Walmart last week and I ran into a constituent whose husband was arrested. He has, he's bipolar. And she told me that she had to eventually get an attorney just to get his meds to him and that he had been in there for a couple of months and that NAF Care was non-responsive and there were issues with NAF Care. And when she asked around, that this is the consensus outside of the county that NAF Care is a problem. So, I mean, can someone address this for me, please?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to, Commissioner. I'll let Colonel Adger weigh in. First, the comments that you're reading came from one disgruntled individual who, whose comments, quite frankly, are inconsistent with the findings of our internal audit, the findings of the outside review agency. And that individual has been, has been the subject of a number of concerns. I don't want to get into that, but, and I understand that in any survey, you're likely to have someone make a comment like that. But what I will tell you is that the actual facts in terms of the individuals managing at NAF Care and the processes that we have put in place to track their performance are very robust. And I think we feel comfortable, and I'll speak, I won't speak for Colonel Adger, he can say it himself, but we feel comfortable that the staffing, the protocols and the processes are as good as it gets. And in fact, we focus on and are reinforced by the results that we have, we have seen, one. Secondly, in terms of, I don't know what impressions people have of NAF Care. Here again, I'm not sure, they're privy to the governance process and the data that we look at and the day-to-day tracking. I'm happy to go through the 150 metrics that we track on a regular basis. But I will tell you that NAF Care is a well-regarded organization. A lot of the things that they are doing with us, they actually deploy and have learned from other facilities that they manage. And so I can't comment really on where other people's impressions may come from. What I will tell you is, we have a very detailed process. We report to the executive committee, including a number of the commissioners who have attended those sessions and the county attorney and the county manager. And Chairman Pitts has attended some of those as well. The sheriff attends. And so I feel pretty strongly, I think we feel pretty strongly, that we have a tight governance process and that NAF Care actually performs very well.
Well, that's all great. However, it wouldn't have been a red flag to me had I not run into the constituent in Walmart last week. And the constituent told me that her husband was arrested and he was in our jail and he had been there six weeks. And for the entire six weeks, she only, she could not get his medication to him. NAF Care was non-responsive and that she had so many problems and she couldn't even talk to someone. She literally had to get an attorney to help her to get this man his meds and it took over six weeks. So if I had not run into this constituent, it would not even be a red flag. So I think that there is something there. And I understand what you're saying about this survey that was filled out, but anyone who has a problem with any service is going to be a disgruntled constituent. That includes me, you and anyone else. That's the category that we're going to end up in when we do a negative reporting on any service that we're being provided. But beyond that, the reality is, I ran into an actual constituent face-to-face and she told me her experience and it was not good. So I think that there is something there that you need to probably take a look at and just make sure that we don't have these problems moving forward.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I'm happy to talk to that constituent and make sure that the individual is getting what they need. So I don't know enough about that specific situation, but I'm happy to follow up if you think that's appropriate.
I would encourage you to do so, Mr. Adams.
I will.
All right. Commissioner Hall, anything else?
And let me see. That's it. Thank you very much, Alton and Colonel Adger. Appreciate it.
I had one issue.
Question or comment as well?
Commissioner Carr, followed by Commissioner Houseman.
Thank you. Just looking at this contract, the lack of minority participation, of female business enterprise participation is pretty much all but know, I think less than 2% here. I've heard concerns from residents that have relatives that were incarcerated that did say that they did not receive what they deemed proper care. I've heard that masks were not available on request, that they were having, holding masks, you know, I heard rumors that people were, you know, the masks were being rationed out. Some I've heard up to one per month, which I don't know if that's true or not necessarily. You know, people are going to say things, that doesn't necessarily make it the case. But I have heard a lot of tales about inadequate service, medical services. So I'm not so hot on supporting this necessarily. Obviously, I know we have to have a medical provider, but again, because we don't really look at these things and review them or hear from these outfits, it always leaves that question in my mind when I hear bad things from constituents about experiences with their relatives or people that they know at Fulton County Jail. So, and I never hear someone say, hey, we got excellent medical care at the jail, you know, and I'm waiting to hear that one day and I'm assuming, hopefully I will, I mean, who knows? But the minority participation level is just unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. But that's all I had about this.
If I may, this is Felicia. I'll address the minority participation. This contract, the majority of this contract is for medical personnel that's being provided by the provider. So more than 90% of this contract is personnel staff and pharmacy services. The other is for doctors and physicians. In the past, in past contracts, the doctors and physicians were subcontractors. NAF Care chose to make those doctors and physicians part of their contract where they're paying them directly versus them having to have subcontracts and being paid separately, which is what most of the doctors wanted. And so out of this contract, only about 3% was available for subcontracting and 1.8% of that was done. This is a unique contract in which most of it is staffing based on the county's requirement on how they staff and how many staff people are provided by this contract. The county dictates the number of staffing people from the number of nurses to the number of technicians that have to be provided by the contract.
Okay, and I hear what you're saying, but I guess, you know, with a contract this big, you know, that leads to the different types of questions that we would have where we don't have someone from NAF Care to give us the facts. You said 90% of this 25 million is staffing. Well, how many staff members are we talking about? What is the diversity makeup of those staff members? Are those local people that are getting those jobs and coming in in terms of technicians and staff with NAF Care? You know, unless some, you know, and again, with contracts this big, you know, and maybe this is just me, but I'm used to asking questions to the people that expect to get our taxpayer dollars and we never really seem to get to do that up here, but that's a whole nother conversation. That's the way things are set up here. But with me, you know, I'm going to have questions about this type of stuff and I'm not going to support something when I don't get the answers to them directly from the person providing the service. But again, you know, we don't seem to have that opportunity much, so I guess.
A couple of things. In terms of having the opportunity to meet with NAF Care, we have quarterly meetings. The Chairman Pitts has attended, so has Commissioner Morris. And because of his role in the justice area. And the county attorney is there, as I said, in her office. So at that forum, we actually have very detailed discussions around a number of things that you are, that you're talking about. So there is a mechanism.
I understand that, but we don't have the details and you expect us to approve it. You know, at the end of the day, you know, anybody, does, I ask this question, would NAF Care have the opportunity to be on this line at all to answer any questions if some came up? And I guess the answer, what would the answer to that be, you know? Do they even afford it that opportunity or?
Mr. Adams and Colonel Adger, I have observed the staff over there, Commissioner Carr, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but just by my naked eye, probably the majority or minority that are on staff at our jail. And if you wanted an actual count, we could get that for you.
Including the head of the project here.
That's correct. As I mentioned to your Chief of Staff, Commissioner Carr, Cornelius Henderson runs the engagement for NAF Care. He is an African-American. Von Sheila Barber, who runs the operations at the jail, is an African-American. Those jobs are in fact, to your question, local jobs. And we do have, I do not have the count of the demographic breakdown of the employees because they are their employees, but I can certainly get that to you. And I do believe, as the chairman said, that there is a fairly diverse group of individuals who are providing services at the jail.
Okay. It's certainly something I think people want to know about before you talk about spending this kind of money. And I think personally, when you have contracts at a certain amount of money, I think hearing from the actual contractee, I think is something that makes sense to me, you know. You know, if someone getting a $25 million contract doesn't take the time to make themselves available to answer questions, you know, when, to the people that are voting on the, on the situation, I just think, you know, at a certain dollar or not, it makes sense to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak. That's all I got.
And also?
Got a question or a comment?
Yes.
With regard to what was just the discussion about NAF Care making themselves available, I would imagine that any commissioner could get with them at their, on their own schedule if they desired to do that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Or they could attend one of the quarterly briefings. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. So Commissioners, I suggest if you have an interest that you take advantage of either one of those opportunities. I just wanted to comment on the budget itself. If there's any other items that are directly related to the Sheriff's Department or for that matter, anything in the criminal justice system, I hope that it's reflected in their budgets and not ours. So just want to make that comment as we enter into the budget season.
Good comment.
This is Commissioner Hall. And I would ask that we be provided with the report of all the departments who currently have contracts that are coming out of the non-agency fund so that we can be familiar with exactly what's happening through that fund. Because it'll give us a better reflection of what's actually being spent for the departments while we're going into this budget season and actually working on our budget for 2021.
That's possible. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I'll move approval of this item.
All right, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
All right, properly move to the second. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Houseman? Uh, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Mister Ellis?
Yes.
Mister Morris?
Yes.
Mister Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington?
Yes.
Mister Carr?
No.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes, six shades, one name.
Continue, Madam President.
On the bottom of page 11, County Manager's Items Under Open and Responsible Government, 20-0752, Presentation of the COVID-19 Operational Response Update.
Mister Manager?
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. We will, as we have before, move through a COVID update, and I think we can do so fairly rapidly. I've hit a couple of high points up front. Number one, the trends have taken a negative turn, uh, going from positive cases on seven-day average from in the mid 60s to now above 100. And we are seeing that across the nation, so I do think uh it's wise to listen to Dr. Paxton this morning in terms of implications for Fulton County and the state of Georgia. The percent positive, though, uh, when tested remains uh below 5%, that's a good fact. And we remain below 9% in terms of total caseload in Georgia due to, I would uh say, our interventions as well. And most importantly, the projected death rate is one-half of what it would have been otherwise without these interventions. Testing is still our strong suit. You'll see today that we're closing in on 770,000 tested, and I believe that we can reach a million by the end of the year at current run rates. We are seeing testing demand improve, although we still have plenty of capacity uh and a quick turnaround time. So we will continue to emphasize to the public the importance of testing and the ability to get those results back quickly. As well, of course, we continue to test two to three times what other pure counties are doing, demonstrating, I think, a significant commitment to this part of the COVID response that has been, again, our strong suit from the uh from the outset. We really continue to hold steady in terms of our operational status, but planning for a post-COVID future. One of the things we want to highlight today is the significance of the Fulton Industrial District and some early insights from a ULI study of economic development potential there. I think this will be one of the most significant set of economic development initiatives that Fulton County will ever undertake or has undertaken. It's due to the untapped potential of that area that we all know full well. But Fulton County Airport as an economic center, as well as the additional county investments that are being planned, in a world-class animal shelter, a public safety training center, as well as an emergency operations center, and removal of blighted property in that area. So it's a very, very significant undertaking, and we'll highlight that today to demonstrate that while in the midst of a COVID response, we also are keeping our eye toward the future. The CARES funds continue to be managed, I believe, with uh an orientation both impact and compliance. We meet every Tuesday morning to review the current POs against the plan and what's been expended versus what's still yet to be expended. You'll see today that we have now expended 57.3 million, included in that is 14.6 million to our municipalities, several of which have now maxed out on their allotment of the 25 million that you allocated. However, having said all of that, the most important task in front of us is elections, and we do have a brief update on that as part of our COVID response. And one thing that you'll see today is, obviously, it remains a hands-on-deck uh approach, all hands-on-deck approach, with daily management calls and all of our relative leadership and departments involved in supporting Rick Baron and the Department of Registration and Elections. We are pleased to see that our ability to handle early voting is much improved over the June experience, and most of our locations report below an hour wait. And of course, that reporting now is available to the public on our app as well as our website, and I think that's been hugely beneficial. We have already seen over 220,000 folks vote, either absentee or early voting. And again, things like State Farm Arena, uh, the app, and then, of course, something that no other county is doing in terms of mobile uh voting sites, has been recognized, I think, by the public, by the press, uh, and the Secretary of State's office, when he voted at Secretary, uh, voted at State Farm Arena himself over the last several days. So I think we should all take uh pride in what we've been able to do. However, you will hear today of a COVID-19 impact at the elections warehouse. And by the way, of course, that's central to our abilities to staff, support, deliver equipment to 255 locations on election day. So this is not an insignificant outbreak in terms of its impact, the number of people, and the number of steps that the uh group has had to take uh to move its entire operation to Georgia World Congress Center to accomplish even more social distancing, uh, take appropriate steps with the current staff, as well as hire contractors who will backfill where we, in fact, have folks uh who are now COVID positive. So this is a very, very significant uh impact, but one that we believe in a Plan B mindset we have overcome and have addressed uh going forward. And in that spirit, I'm, I want to say again, I'm just very proud of our county leadership across the board, demonstrated a huge amount of persistence as well as flexibility to adjust challenges that no one could anticipate or plan for as we keep critical functions of government going and run the most intense elections process in in anyone's memory. So Mister Chairman, we'll uh have uh Chief Operating Officer Anna Roach uh take over and run the presentation, calling on the folks that'll be presenting, and then Chief Financial Officer Sharon Whitmore uh close with the financials.
Thank you, Mister Manager. Madam COO, you with us?
I am, Mister Chairman. Good morning and good morning, members of the board. We are going to, uh, in the interest of time, dive right into uh the emergency management report that will capture all of the epidemiology statistics around COVID-19 and also update the board um on our PPE distribution efforts as well as our testing efforts. Uh, each week, we are fortunate to have the presence and input of our District Health Director, Dr. Paxton, uh, and I'd like to allow her to make a few remarks even without her slide uh before we get into questions. Um, so Matt, if you will, take us away.
Good morning, ma'am. Thank you much. Good morning, Mister Manager. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and present to you today. Uh, we have some new slides to go ahead and share with the group, so we'll get started. Doug Schuster will go ahead and look through our models and updates. Doug?
Morning, Commissioners. Okay, on the first slide, um, I, it's a little bit different today. In in the past two months, I've been able to report very encouraging trends uh for Fulton County. Um, since we last met two weeks ago, um, in in the best-case scenario, we have uh hit plateaus in many of the areas that I've reported. Although these plateaus are in good areas, it is a cautionary tale and um and 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 then some slight rises in some in in some categories. So uh, for Fulton County cases, um, as the city manager alluded to, we have risen from 64 to over 100, and and it's and it's concerning, but 100 is uh, you know, is is worse than 64. Um, the seven-day average for positive tests has exhibited a plateau for for a little bit of time now, three or four weeks uh since the 19th of September. Uh, between the 3.4 range to 4.3 range, I did see a slight upward uh tick over the weekend, uh, but we were at 4.3 currently. And then if you look at the chart, the last bullet references the chart that Fulton County's percent of the state's caseload has exhibited a plateau for about a month now, just below 8.8%. Um, the plateau is still good news, as you, as everyone knows, that that's lower than the 10% of the state's total. In the next column, we're gonna talk about Fulton County deaths. Uh, since uh September 30th, we've had a slight rise from half a death a day to 2.1, um, something that bears watching. It's very similar. But uh, the encouraging news is that our percent of the state's total continues to drop and has been on this pretty steady decrease. And every time that number drops, we're currently at 9.7%. That really represents lives that are being saved. Next slide. A little bit different way uh to look at the dashboard that I want to go. I know there's a lot of numbers here. Um, as you can see, um, the uh 24-hour change, which is the third column for Fulton County, was 66, uh, resulting in uh getting close to 30,000 Fulton County cases total. Fulton County deaths overnight was one, raising this to 607. And uh, Georgia cases, as you can see, 752. Something to look at when you're looking at this chart is to look at the 24-hour change versus the seven-day average. And that way, you can tell whether or not we had a, you know, a a better day than 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 what the seven-day average is. And pretty much every one of these for the reporting period that you're looking at was a was a better day. Uh, some concerning things that that you see is the seven-day average in uh the United States is definitely on the rise at over 50,000 cases again. And um, and so I, putting this together, you can actually see the chart. So if you're looking at uh the chart for the first row Fulton County cases, you can actually see kind of the plateau and the slight rise that we've had from that 65 cases to just over 100, so on the far right. You can also see the plateau uh exhibited in the Fulton County deaths over the last month and the plateau over the last two and a half weeks in the state on cases. And then moving down, there has been a slight plateau in the state's deaths. And then, like I said, you look at the United States there in the red, second from the bottom, there has been a a pretty significant increase in the uh the seven-day average for cases and getting very close to the summertime high for the United States. And then the deaths in the United States have plateaued right around the 750, 800 mark. Next slide. We always report on hospital bed availability. It's an important metric for us to track. Uh, the the points that I want to bring up here is that the hospitalizations have exhibited a a plateau for COVID patients. Uh, between 164 and 178, there was a slight upward trend over the weekend, but it has been a pretty significant observable plateau uh in the 170 range for COVID patients. I do want to point out, if you look at the se- second bullet and then the blue bars on the bar graph to the left, is we've had extraordinarily high numbers of non-COVID patients. Uh, with a seven-day average of non-COVID patients averaging about 300 more than observed over our our summer peaks of COVID patients. So a lot of patients in the hospitals uh that that we weren't seeing earlier this year. And then if you look on the right, we now have uh projections going out till the end of January. Uh, the the next projected peak in hospital beds is going to be third week of January at 388 at the most probable line. And as you can see, we're we're trending just above the most probable line, so we'll continue to watch that. But also, if you look on the the slide to the right in the black line, you can see the exhibited uh plateau that I have been uh mentioning uh at at kind of the end there, where we've leveled out about the 170 range. Next slide. As you can see, we've been, on this slide is uh, the bottom is the graph of the hospital percent positives, and you can see the seven-day trend line has been below, just below 4% since about the 21st of September. Um, the hospital trend uh surprisingly is a little bit lower than the county trend. The county trend did go up over the weekend from 4.0 to 4.3%. And the state trend uh went up a bit from 5.8 to 5.9%. Um, the the uh, while being under 5% was was one of the goals that we have, we want to continue. Um, I'm sure Dr. Paxton will talk about the the personal protective um practices that have pushed us down to that level and continue to push that down. Next slide. Um, on this slide, I believe, once again, I I, this is a very imp- impactful slide to me. If you look at uh the black line, uh, at 607 deaths uh as of this Monday, and then look at uh where we were at for a very long time, over three months, we were at 11.5% of the state's total. The difference just on Monday is 267, um, uh, what, excuse me, uh, 167 prob- uh, assumed saved lives. And the same thing, we were at 15% at the beginning, which is, you know, quite a, quite an impactful slide to see that uh the impacts that are targeted testing and spreading out all throughout the county and and has made a huge difference. Next slide. And then I I I just want to make sure that it's it's impactful. If you look at the bottom-right corner, uh, where it says COVID in the world, and the darker countries have the highest uh per 100,000 spread uh communicability of COVID-19. And it's the first, anytime we reach a new month, it's the first month ever with COVID-19. And it just shows kind of the unpredictability of COVID-19 when you have a a red country in the southern hemisphere and a red country in the northern hemisphere, and then you see Europe, which had been very low just a month ago, starting to show a a a new wave or peak. And it's, we are now at the fastest ever, you would think, uh, the fastest ever um cases per day, we're over 200,000 new cases per day in the world and 5,000 deaths per day. Thank you. If you look at the United States, um, just above that, you can see the spread that is happening in the Midwest. But I see a lot of red in states that border Georgia too, like Alabama and Tennessee. So our neighbors are starting to experience some growth in cases. And then uh the Georgia map on the left shows that Fulton County, while it's light orange, that still represents that it's communicable, uh, and and it's a very tenuous situation. So uh, I think while our numbers are still in pretty good positions, that it could change pretty quickly. And that's all I have. Matt, next slide.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate that. Moving on to testing by county folks, just a quick update. The county manager did uh reference that we are looking very uh very good, excuse me, in the overall number of tests that we have actually provided. The number that you see, uh, we incorporate some of the additional data that we came in on Monday and Tuesday. We're actually at 772,136 individuals tested in Fulton County. Uh, def- we're extremely proud of all the work that everyone has done to get us to that point. That still puts us in the 23, 24% range on the overall test for the state of Georgia. And we, once again, love to go ahead and address the message that you can get your test results in a 48-hour turnaround period. So many individuals are doing this. Uh, we're finding this out, that employers out there are looking for their employees to be able to get test results so they can get back to work if they've been exposed to someone else with a 48-hour turnaround. Uh, that's the hard work of actually the Department of Public Health and the Board of Health to make that happen. We have been successful together to make sure that we can get individuals the answers that they need as quick as possible. Slight increase in demand. Uh, we are seeing that. Uh, we did have some lower time periods, uh, individuals taking advantage of our testing mobile as well as fixed sites. We're seeing an increase in that as of late. Not sure what is that directly related to, uh, but we are grateful that people have put their trust in us to go ahead and get the testing done with us. Poo vaccinations, Dr. Paxton did speak to that. Uh, just wanted to go ahead, in past meetings, just wanted to reference the fact that we are doing that in partnership with the Board of Health. She'll probably, in her comments, go ahead and speak a little bit more to that, but it has been successful and it's uh, uh, looking forward to expanding that process as well. Next slide. A milestone that we'd like to go ahead and actually draw people's attention to, uh, if you look at some of the the newer numbers that we have, if you combine the Fulton County Board of Health's box, uh, as well as the core mobiles box, we are now 240,000 total tests that have actually occurred uh at those locations on top of all the other partners that we have. One new addition to our bar graph to share with everyone, and Dr. Paxton can definitely go ahead and expand upon this, is the core, whose uh team is doing contact tracing on behalf of the Board of Health. They have been able to go ahead and add testing, in-home testing to those, that initiative that they're doing. So we have 16 individuals that they have tested since they started that program, and we hope to see that number slowly rise as we go forward. Once again, the total number is 772,136 for all testing has been accomplished in Fulton County to date. So one last thing before we go to the question slide, I'd just like to go ahead and acknowledge the fact of the other program that we do oversee with our Animal Services. Uh, we are now looking at 139 dogs that are in our shelter. This is about 137% decrease uh in our numbers since we, uh, pre-COVID. This is directly related to the amount of individuals in our community that are fostering animals, adopting animals, giving these individuals forever homes. And we cannot thank, I cannot personally thank the team enough, Lifeline, who is working diligently at that shelter to make this possible, as well at that shelter to make this possible as well as every citizen out there who has taken home one of these animals and given them a forever home so I just wanted to draw a little attention to that that's some of the newest numbers we've seen thus far and is directly related to the community support that we have had with that being said I'm going to turn it back to our Chief Operating Officer Ms Roach
Thank you Matt I appreciate this before we go to questions if it's okay with you Mr Chairman we'd like to hear briefly from Dr Paxton who did have some breaking news to share with us before we take questions from the board
Dr Paxton
Hi yeah it's hoping you can hear me I'm not sure that I recall this absolutely breaking news but these are things that I want to emphasize because you know certainly in the wake of the covid super spreader event at the White House and you know our own president coming down with covid we've been receiving lots of queries and actual reactions to the information that's been coming out and so I wanted to stress a few points while I have everyone's attention I'm going to start off by saying you know sort of quoting for one of my favorite TV shows which is no longer there but it's Game of Thrones winter is coming now with all the dread that 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 pretends and I want to remind you you know we've only been dealing with this disease I mean it feels like forever but covid nineteen has really only been around for about eleven months so we're you know getting you know every day we're getting more information about it and learning more about it but I wanted to bring up a couple of things about what's different about covid nineteen and the seasonal flu and some things that we need to do so basically the the similarities that both are respiratory virus they have similar transmission patterns so they have the the initial symptoms tend to be similar and they're prevented in pretty much the same way except that the flu has a we have a vaccine we do not as yet have one for for covid however there's also some very significant differences that we need to keep in mind particularly in the way that it's things have been politicized to the point that sometimes the actual data gets lost and so I want to bring to everyone's attention to remind them that covid nineteen is way more transmissible than just even seasonal flu as we've even had a very cogent example in our the way that it it sort of has swept through the our own elections warehouse in quickly it has a higher mortality rate and in very importantly it has much more sequelae means after effects even among young people so approximately thirty five percent of people still report having significant symptoms two to three weeks after they initially fell ill which is not what you see in seasonal flu and what's even worse is that current estimates are that about ten percent of people who had covid even people who had mild infections you know go on to become long haulers which means that they still are experiencing significant deficits even months after infection and these are things like pulmonary you know problems cardiac we have young people having you know evidence of having their hearts have been affected by by this neurologic all the way from strokes to just what's often referred to as brain fog fog coagulopathies which are clotting problems people having again strokes related to that we've had amputations you know from people throwing you know embolized various places so I just want to remind people this is not the seasonal flu this is much more important so what I'm going to do is just as I always do encourage what can we do about this we can do things like if you haven't had your flu shot get your flu shot we are as has been mentioned we are providing those at our at our Spox we have had we're still working out getting the staffing and training so that we can eventually have them at all of the Spox but we that is our goal so that people even people who don't have insurance that don't have money can come and get a get a flu shot again social distancing you know this masks we have you know about a half a million that will be coming into Fulton County by the end of this month and we're going to make sure that we get them out to everyone who can we appreciate having the commissioners help us to get them out to your to your constituents and to encourage them to use it as you you've heard about the testing that we're doing and we want to encourage people to cooperate with the contact tracing because the contact tracing is very difficult we even have reports from other districts which makes me think it's probably happening here that other districts where there have been credible reports of people like deliberately like sending their kids to school even though they know that their kids have been in contact with a case or even in some cases where the child themselves were actually positive and as you can understand that's up that makes my blood run cold but it does it has been happening so in addition here's something I'm going to bring up because this is my job to do is to remind people that we have a major holidays coming up Thanksgiving all right and I'm encouraging everyone to start thinking about that and to start making a plan because traditionally Thanksgiving is when people come together with their family of all generations and we are expecting that that is might turn out very much it might turn out to be sort of like what we saw in the fourth around the fourth of July weekend with higher cases and possibly even higher than fourth of July because people will be inside they'll be with grandma they'll be with grandpa you know they'll have their asymptomatic kids running around so I'm encouraging people to start thinking about that you know and to figure out you know what are you going to do is it worth it to bring everyone together if it is are you you know work we have testing available we want to encourage people to use it we have masks we want people to to use them we want everyone to make a plan but again Thanksgiving is coming and that is could very well be another super spreader time similar to what we saw in July and one last thing I forgot to mention before and it came up during the jail presentation we have had made available to us from the federal government and via DPH rapid card tests the Abbott binax tests which we will be deploying some of them have been sent directly to long term care facilities so that long term these are fifteen minute tests and they so that patients and staff can be tested like on a weekly basis and so those are those are often will be deployed you know basically starting now and we have at Fulton County Board of Health have been given our own supply of rapid tests and we will be making these available to the jail particularly to you know basically as the as the rap as the Abbott testing machine is sort of phased out we're going to be moving to the to the rapid card test so we will be making those available to the jail so that they can also test people very quickly and I understand and this is my last comment that I understand that there were some questions from the Board of Commissioners about contact tracing in Fulton County I'm not certain exactly what the questions are so I'm just going to say in general yes we are doing contact tracing the traditional one based out of the Board of Health which is usually by telephone and we try to reach people by telephone and but in addition we have contracted with a core using City of Atlanta funds to for them to actually be boots on the ground to go they've been going to people's houses they have started this full force on October seventh and so far the it's going really quite well and since we're sending people out to the houses and we have we are sending them out and they're testing as well any household contacts that they that they find it so not only are they doing the case investigation and asking people about their contacts and providing them with access to resources about eleven percent need need significant social service resources in order to maintain isolation so core puts them in contact with them but also we are test they are testing you know contacts in the house so it's sort of a full service thing we regard this as sort of a pilot we want to see if we can if we can learn things from this that can be applied to the rest of our contact tracing and other districts as as well so I think those are the main I have a lot I could talk forever but I'm going to stop right now and so those are the main points that I wanted to get across to everyone today thanks
Thank you Dr Paxton Madam COO
Thank you Mr Chairman we're ready to take questions
All right
This is Commissioner Hall I'd like to ask a few questions
You have the floor Commissioner Hall
Thank you and thank you Matthew and team for the presentation and Dr Paxton it's very unfortunate that we're seeing these spikes in the numbers of covid cases and and deaths and that is that is a cause for concern I do want to address the fact that the community has literally done an outcry to me my office and the Board of Health on numerous occasions for testing needs because we have of course populations of people who do not have transportation or any means to get to our testing sites or health centers and so I have a few questions how many vacant positions because I heard Dr Paxton mention ensuring that there were positions so that the work could get done or something like that so how many vacant positions do we still have in the Board of Health that have not been filled
Um I don't actually have that
Kenneth Harmon
Yes I can hear you I don't know if you can hear me but that actually doesn't have any impact on our our covid testing operations we actually have through contracts with the temporary workers and like we have the staffing for that is fine in fact our in our capacity is is fine what I was what I did make reference to maybe that's what you heard today is that in order for us to give the flu vaccine we have to meet certain standards in terms of you know who's been trained there are laws here about who is eligible to 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 give them and so we had anticipated we had originally thought I've been told that the DPH could provide a certain number of nurses for for that but it turns out they can't supply all of them so we are making adjustments now and we but we feel very confident that we can that we can do we can we can make those adjustments and we can get the additional people on board so it's just a matter of a few days or so
Oh that is awesome okay so you said your capacity is fine
Yeah I mean for the for testing
Okay well let me go back to one of the numerous emails that I've received in my office that have been forwarded to you and your team one in particular on Friday October second at two forty PM from Erica Mitchell Atlanta Board of Education District Five representative and the superintendent of Atlanta Public Schools where they were asking for Fulton County to assist APS with covid testing for students and staff as they were trying to phase in reopening of the schools and they said that they also wanted to do a Zoom with you and your staff and the superintendent and the soup and the chief of staff to the Atlanta Public School Board concerning trying to put together a plan to address this need but your response to that as it has been for the past couple of months was that Fulton County Board of Health does not have the capacity to do testing drives for individual schools however we strongly encourage that anyone who would like a test should avail themselves of our standing testing sites and you went on to provide the appointment that appointments can be made online and the telephone number for the hotline and the website address which that the superintendent and the elected Atlanta Public School rep are trying to inform us that there are numerous families and children that don't have the ability to get to the testing sites and so they want to create a plan to assist those families and children with getting tested and this will help them with their plan to reopen the schools which now we all know from reading the newspapers they have put that off until January but it would be a great thing since we do provide public health through the Board of Health that we try to work with them as as much as possible to meet this need to the community
Yes And that I think you're conflating two things one is that you know you you realize that the number of actual students in both the Atlanta Public Schools and Fulton County are way over a hundred thousand and so yes it is true that we do not have the capacity to send mobile units to you know for example to each and every school to to do that and so if I and I and we that's not something that we were ever able to promise to do however when I did say that as I I stand by what I wrote to the superintendent and you please keep in mind we actually have had I just spoke to Superintendent Herring with Dr Toomey last week and I'm in contact of course with Superintendent Looney as well about this we are encouraging people to use the standing units that we that we have because again you're right we don't we do not have the possibility of being able to send out mobile units to all the schools and to test every 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 student and every staff that is not within our capabilities however we do have a fair amount of unused capacity at the moment that we have same day appointments we have very fast turnaround and so I'm encouraging people to use those as they as that is available
Okay so you're working on provide trying to put together a plan with APS to address this situation I mean nobody with any nobody with any common sense or being realistic would ever assume that you could meet the need of a hundred thousand students and their families that's just ludicrous but at least to provide some type of coverage and and assistance with trying to get people tested in some way would be good so I'm just asking that you at least you know let us know what can you do and because the response from your email made everybody feel like you were just saying no we just can't do this because that has been your response to many other emails we've had numerous senior high rises that have contacted the office and requested that someone come and test because covid was moving rapidly throughout their 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 high rise where they live and your response was the same thing that you did not have the capacity to do so and then that was just it there was no other response beyond that
Well Commissioner Hall I just need to recorrect something is that we actually have a standing group here a task force at the at the Board of Health which is made up of you know our head nurses that representatives from the Epi group and they have they meet on a regular basis with representatives of the of the board with Dr Lovett with Dr Herring with Dr Looney and so this has been ongoing so it is incorrect to say that we have not been working with the with the school systems in fact we very much have been doing that and as for the mobile units yes I I am aware that we have lots of people and this is great we have a lot of of people and groups out in the community who contact us and ask to schedule mobile units to go to the area and we do that we accommodate that as much as we can we also take into account other things such as for example we've had I think I remember even one of the ones that you just alluded to and that a particular group wanted to have us come to their to their place but it turns out that they were already very close to another site that we had you know that we had going on and so we said you know really we would want other people to you know we have to be efficient and to have people go to these to this to this other site we do our best and we have a try we realize fully that there are people many people don't have a car many people don't even have you know they don't have a computer they can't get on and make their own appointments so which is why we've put a lot of effort into you know making a we having a testing centers that are walk ups like for example the one at Boulevard you know we've had have put up another scanning Spox at Adamsville to because we understood that there are a lot of people in that neighborhood who were not able to access things we put a Spox there we continue to do the mobile units as and we try to be as efficient as that unfortunately the reality is is that we there are a lot of people who want a mobile unit to come to their thing and it's just not we have to be strategic and efficient how we deploy those
Well thank you Dr Paxton but I also want to just make sure that it is not assumed that the all of these requests were requests for mobile units because they were not and I want to make sure I think you may have not have heard what I said before you just spoke that there were many requests from senior high rises for the senior citizens who live in high rise apartments apartment buildings and apartment complexes and they weren't necessarily requesting mobile units they didn't care if someone just even came and set up a table and swabbed for to do the the testing because the need and swabbed for, to do the, the testing because the need was so great. And looking at the spikes that are happening now, not only in Atlanta and Georgia, but across the United States, I think that this is something that we need to look at addressing for the future because I don't think it's going to go away. I can't, I will most definitely pull all of the requests that came through my office and resend them to you so you can see the details of those requests. And that every single instance, your response has been the same, that you do not have the capacity. So I think that maybe we should circle back around and see what we can do to address these in a better way moving forward.
Okay. Just again, to specify, when I say mobile units, a mobile unit is really anything that, that is not one of our drive-in or fixed spots. So I mean, like, you know, I'm not necessarily talking about a van, but you know, it's like anytime that we have to go to that, it's a movable spot. So that's what I'm referring to, is saying mobile units. So anyway, just to clarify, just to clarify the use of the word mobile unit.
Oh, no problem at all, but I know exactly what a mobile unit is. And you could ask the county manager, because I was the only commissioner who actually had been requesting mobile units throughout the various departments to get these services out to the community. So I'm very familiar with that. But I, I do want to express my concern for the need that is growing out in the community. Because when I, when I go out to the community, I'm hearing it in face-to-face conversations as well as the numerous emails that I'm receiving, as well as Facebook messages, Instagram direct messages. And any way that the constituents contact me, and it, there are a lot. And I just want to make sure that moving forward, that we have a better response. So if there's something that you need to be able to respond to the community and provide these services more, then please let us know so that we can make that available to you. Especially in lieu of the fact that I know in November, you're bringing back your resolution to try to separate the Board of Health and make it completely a state entity with the Fulton County name still on it. So I don't want to move forward with these public issues not being addressed. Because it, it looks like the Board of Health still needs a lot of help and that it should not be moved anywhere.
Continue. Mr. Hall?
I'm here.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
I had a, I had a question and comment.
Mr. Carr?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Dr. Paxton, thank you for the update. The Thanksgiving issue I'm worried about as well. And I've been telling some of my constituents to definitely rethink Thanksgiving. My family will probably not be getting together and gathering like we used to down in Troup County. But, uh, you know, things are changing. And speaking of community needs, one thing I did want to bring up, and I've brought it up before, with, with COVID-19, you know, there still is a general community need and conditions that, that, that can't be calculated numerically, not by statistics or by the Board of Health or by emergency management, who all do a great job. But what I do believe we do need, and I think this year has clearly shown, is, and I want to see, Dick, you know, I want to see from the other commissioners if there's some kind of interest in establishing some type of a municipal affairs director position of some sort. You know, this position is again about relationships. And as we've seen over this year, you know, I think we need to work on that. It's letting our cities know that, that they are important to Fulton County and I think worthy of a, some type of a dedicated staff that would be committed daily to constant communications with our cities, within the schools within our cities and the city's local concerns. I would really like to look at establishing some type of a position like that. And, you know, I don't want to make this into a motion in terms of establishing the position, but I would like to see if there's interest in having a county manager and HR take a look at what the possibilities are in terms of establishing that type of a position in this coming budget, so that cities feel like they matter to Fulton County. Now, we all know they do, of course, but over this past year, I, I think we can clearly see it. Some have felt like they do not matter. And I think this position is really necessary in terms of getting information from all 15 cities on a constant basis, so that we're updated with what's going on. And the cities feel like they have someone to directly address concerns and issues too as well. So I would like to see if there is interest from, from all of our commissioners. And I think this position, in my opinion, would answer to us, being the seven commissioners, if there's interest to establish this type of a position. So I'd like to hear from y'all if there's interest in it. I'd like, if there is interest, I'd like for HR and for the county manager to take a look at it and see what kind of a position they could come up with that makes sense to address our 15 cities.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr, are you done?
Yes.
He's put that on, on a, can we talk about this at some point? Because I think we need to get through.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think it may be a worthy topic for conversation, but I don't think it's germane to the topic that we're on right now in terms of COVID response. I think it would be good if we could complete that.
Okay.
For purposes of today, of today's, where we're at in the agenda is just a specific discussion around COVID. I did have a couple of just questions related to the report that was provided. You know, thanks to the team for their presentation as well as all the, all the great work that's being done. Just a couple of questions for, for Dr. Paxton, just for, I know you made the comments relative to the flu and, and standing up kind of the stuff with the shots. I know there's a lot of, definitely a real big concerted community effort. And, you know, kudos to a lot of corporations and so forth that are, they're pushing that and making that available out in all our communities because it is going to require a collective effort. It, and really my question with, with the flu is, do you have a sense in terms of, you know, kind of timing or most likely timing when we could start to see that emerge, you know, within our hospitalizations and, and, you know, what sort of the timing for a likely spike? And, you know, and also we know that it's going to be, when that occurs and if it occurs, you know, there, you're going to have folks that are conflicted about, do they have COVID? Do they have the flu? And how do they react to that? And their impacts on their families and extended people they've been exposed to, et cetera. So just interested in kind of your, anything you know about sort of the timing of when we start to see cases of the flu and potential spikes?
Yeah. Well, as you, as you are well aware, this, this year has been kind of different in many, in many ways. So it's hard to make predictions. But traditionally, seasonal flu really starts to, it reaches its peak right around the holidays. You know, you know, usually November, December, January tend to be like the time, one time when we see the most number of flu cases. Which is why we actually advise people to get their flu shot somewhere around end of September or October. Because it needs a little time for it to, you know, sort of kick in. And then we want to see it, you know, predict, you know, there to project, protect people, you know, basically for five, six, you know, six, six months. Now, what we don't know what's going to happen this year is, we, we just don't know what's going to happen. As I mentioned before, I'm hopeful, you know, sometimes when I wake up and I'm a cockeyed optimist, that we might see a lower number of flu cases this year because people are wearing masks for COVID.
Right.
And so that might cut down on the, on actual transmission of the, of the flu. But I don't know. I mean, we'll find, I mean, data will, will show me, show us as we, as we go through. What, and, but as I also mentioned, because the symptoms for the most part are very similar, I mean, there, there are certain things that are like specific really to COVID. Like if you lose your sense of smell or taste, it's probably COVID, something else. But otherwise, you really can't tell. So we have a very low threshold. I tell people, you have a, if you have any symptoms, number one, isolate. Don't start spreading it around. And then do go get a test. Because that's the definitive way of finding out whether or not it's COVID versus something else, like just the cold or, or a possible flu. So I guess that was a long-winded way of saying, I don't really know what's going to happen.
Yeah. And well, maybe a last, last question for on the flu topic. Is there any sort of public data available that suggests, or do we have some sort of sense of the number of flu vaccines that are being administered and given relative to where we were at this point in time last year?
Um, yes, the answer is yes, there is data. I don't actually have it at my fingertips. But what I also, what I do know though is, is that the CDC has made a commitment, CDC and HHS, is to make lots of flu vaccine available this year. So this is great in that we don't have a short, we have, don't have any projected shortages of, of flu vaccine. So, you know, it's there. People who want a flu vaccine should be able to get it. I can actually dig up the, I can actually find out so far what's been, you know, how much has been given. I'd have to go to DPH, you know, for that and see if they can, if they can provide that, that information.
Yeah, maybe something if, if it is available, if we know that, hey, we're seeing 20, 30% upticks in the amount of vaccines that we're giving at this point in time, that sort of stuff. I think that would be useful data. Then certainly, hopefully, we, you know, we can continue to promote, you know, kind of the, get a flu vaccine, you know, get a flu shot somewhere, wherever it is, kind of in our, within the context of some of these campaigns we're running. So, you know, hopefully we can continue to really push that within the next couple of weeks. And then my, my last sort of, this question for you really was around current case data. I know we're seeing some of the upticks coincides with what's going on a little bit around the country. But is there anything within the trends within Fulton County that you, you see, are we, are we seeing any reemergence and uptick within congregate facilities, like nursing homes and so forth like we saw before? Or has that still been relatively, we don't have any early alarm bells that we're seeing there? And these are more kind of general cases that are, you know, just, you know, have trended back up?
I'm sorry, uptick in COVID or flu?
COVID. I'm talking about COVID now. Yeah.
Well, actually, no, we haven't been seeing a real uptick in that, which is, which is good. We have a task force here at the Board of Health that works with all the long-term care facilities. And so every week, you know, they're on a call with them and we get reports of how many cases that are coming in. So yes, we have had cases, but nowhere near the number that we had, you know, earlier on in the, in the epidemic. We also have instituted a prevention team here that actually goes out to the various long-term care facilities to look at their prevention methods and, and, you know, to, and to sort of help them with that. And I think all that combined has been, has really led us to keeping this really way down and, you know, to more manageable levels. And as I mentioned also, those rapid card tests are, have gone out. And so now we're going to be able to have the capacity to test patients and staff essentially on a weekly basis. So, you know, then if anybody does come up positive, then, you know, steps can be taken right then and there to isolate and to sort of control any possible outbreaks. So things are going relatively well in that, in that state.
Gotcha. And then last question on tracing. And I guess maybe it ties in maybe a little bit to maybe potentially with some of the uptick in cases, or maybe it's not really manifested itself in the data yet. But with the Fulton County Schools going back largely to more of a full-blown face-to-face, or at least having that option available, I don't know if that, you know, that would have been, we're seeing any sort of indicators that that's contributing to, you know, some of the uptick in cases. But more, I guess, relevant question for you on that is, what are we, are we do, are we doing anything unique with Fulton County Schools in terms of the tracing piece of it? Because it's a unique, it's certainly a unique situation for tracing. And I guess some of this tracing in, in the school stuff is even being played out in social media forums and all that because of just people figuring out who the kid is and then it, or, or teacher is, and then it sort of mushrooms from there. But I, I guess I'd be interested in sort of how we are partnering with FCS specifically related to tracing.
Yeah. Well, we, we're working all the school systems on a specialized notification system from the schools to us. As I said, because this is a, is a notifiable disease, we get, we are informed of every positive case that, you know, that's tested. However, it's not always easy to tell, you know, to, to figure out what's a cluster if you're just getting a name and a, and a, you know, and a date and some other, and some other stuff. So what we have, what we're instilling with all of the school systems is a specialized reporting system, so that we will, we have basically direct access to the school. And so we can then investigate, you know, any clusters that arise, you know, in students or staff through that, through that system. So it's, it's, it's more streamlined than having to go through the regular, you know, the overall reporting, reporting system. So we'll get it from both sides, both, through both ways.
Any lessons that we're picking up from the tracing? I know the, Dr. Looney has been, you know, vocal with social media about, you know, kids coming to school and that sort of stuff, or, you know, in, in, and really trying to, you know, stress some of the stuff that, that just should be no brainers, that you shouldn't do. But are there, are we seeing any, any, learning anything or picking up on anything in the, in the tracing efforts within the schools?
Well, so far I can't really, I think we have that there's anything, any one overriding, you know, thing that we, that we've been learning. However, I, we pay a lot of attention to what's happening in other districts because the middle districts that opened up, you know, way, you know, quite a while before. And many of them have actually received quite a bit of media attention because the problem was the mitigation efforts were not necessarily in place. And so one thing that, as we work, as I mentioned on several, as I've mentioned several times today, we have a very active liaison with all of the, with the, of the various schools. And we meet with them all the time and we speak and we're talking, we're working out, you know, the mitigation strategy because, you know, you know, how, how to keep kids, how to keep an appropriate amount of social distancing, you know, what can be done about mask use and all that. Because it, it really comes down to that, is like, can you mitigate well enough to keep people safe? And if you can do that, then you feel a lot better about opening up the schools than if you know going into it that you can't do any of that stuff. And so then in those cases, then it's not really a surprise that people will become positive if there's, if the, if the social mitigation is not in place. So that's why we have been putting a huge emphasis on that with our task force and with our dealings with the, you know, with the, with the superintendents and their staff, as they make plans to open up.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Paxton.
Any other questions for Dr. Paxton?
I do have, oh, I'm sorry. Is that Liz?
Yes, it is.
Oh, go ahead, Liz. I'll go after you.
Thank you. Hello, Dr. Paxton. How are you today?
Fine. How are you?
Just fine, thanks. Back to your comments on the flu vaccine. I, I just want to clarify, you did say that there is no shortage of the vaccine. Is that correct?
Right. There is, there's no, I, I, let me, let me be more specific about that. In general, there's no shortage. We're going to get enough doses. The, the question though is sort of the timing. And so there have been some other districts that, you know, they have been, had to like back down on their planned flu drives because the number of doses they were going to get in at that time wasn't quite enough, so they have to, to, to prolong their flu drives. We in Fulton have not yet had that problem. So we think that, you know, we're, we're not going to have, 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 have that issue. But, you know, overall, we'll, we'll get all the doses we need. It's just a matter of when, as, when they're coming in.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that. And the media was reporting this morning that COV and went out, were running out of their vaccines. So I didn't want the public to be confused by that situation. And then I've gotten a couple of calls and, and some folks that seem to be concerned that getting the flu vaccine might make them more susceptible to COVID. And I know that's not true, but could you just speak to that, please?
Yeah, well, I'll just back you up. That's, it's not going to make you more susceptible. In fact, it probably will make you less susceptible because, you know, there's good reason to believe that if you have the flu, that you are going to be more susceptible to getting COVID. So, you know, we, I don't really see any kind of, there's no downside that. So, um, you know, we, I don't really see any kind of, there's no downside that I can see in terms of getting a flu vaccine. It's not going to make you more susceptible to getting COVID. In fact, it might, and we actually are operating on the fact that it will be protective for you to not have to also have the flu. That will be protective against COVID.
Well, that was my understanding. Again, you know, there's a lot of different misinformation out there. So I just think that that should be part of our public communication, just to clarify that, so folks aren't confused with the two. And then there's also been some, you know, different ideas about how long one should isolate themselves if they think they've been exposed, if they tested positive, don't have any symptoms. I think I read in Europe, they're now saying seven days versus 10 or 14. Can you just speak to that as well? What, what's, what's the current guidance offered along those lines?
Sure. The current guidance is, and I, I, thanks for giving me the opportunity to bring this up again because I can, I can understand how it can be a little bit confusing. Because in some cases, somebody who has actually tested positive actually has a shorter duration of being isolated than somebody who hasn't. So let me explain what it is. It's that what we, the current guidance from CDC and from, from DPH is that anyone who has tested positive should remain in isolation for 10 days. And the last, and they, and before they come out of isolation, they have to have been symptom-free and particularly fever-free for at least 24 hours. Okay? So, so somebody who has actually tested positive has to be in isolation for, for 10 days. Now, for somebody who is a contact, and this is where sometimes I can understand the confusion coming in. We rec, we tell, say, tell to someone who is a contact but has not actually tested positive, they should remain in isolation for 14 days. And the reason for that is simply biology. It's that we know that most people who have come in contact with the, with the virus, if they're going to turn positive, they usually turn positive between anywhere of, you know, between two to usually seven days. But it can go out as long as 14 days. So if you have not become positive by 14 days, then we consider that you're in the clear. And so that is why if you are a contact of someone who has tested positive, we advise that you, we tell people that you need to be in isolation for 14 days. So if that helps.
And then, and I appreciate that. And then secondarily, you know, there are certain groups of employees that are deemed essential. Is there any difference if an essential employee has been exposed but has no symptoms and is not testing positive?
Yes, there definitely are. And so that's an important distinction. There are certain essential employees, like for example, you can, you can understand this very easily in that, medical professionals. Medical professionals who are on the front lines, they are literally coming in contact with somebody who's, who's positive every single day. So if they could not, if you could not run a medical system with having people out every time they come into work, having them have to step out for an additional 14 days. So anyway, so for somebody who is, who is considered to be an essential worker, obviously if they test positive, they're just pulled out. They have to go and they have to do, you know, they're, they're in quarantine. They have to be isolated. Okay? But for somebody who is a contact of somebody who tested positive and that, that contact is an essential worker, they are allowed to continue to work as long as they take all proper mitigation measures, obviously mask-wearing, social distancing and the like. And they have to monitor their symptoms when possible, such as like what we're doing with the elections warehouse. We are actually deploying some of those rapid tests that we have been given. And we're actually testing everybody, all of these essential workers every day as they come into work to make sure that they're not positive on that day. But that's the main difference is that if you are a part of the essential, uh, critical infrastructure, you are allowed to continue working if you have been exposed as long as you fulfill all the mitigation measures that are called for in that, in that circumstance.
Very good. Thank you so much for clarifying that. We've gotten a lot of questions on that. I'm sure that's somewhere where people can reference it, but if it's not, I would hope that we would put that out.
Well, it's very easily, it's on the CDC website. All they have to do is look up, you know, under essential worker or healthcare worker. And it's the same sort of thing that, you know, it, it, it will talk there about what the, what the measures are.
Very good. Thank you again.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. Um, my question is about the testing during early voting. I remember during our last early voting, we actually had COVID-19 testing at the early voting locations. Are we going to continue to do that at any point?
Uh, yes, we are, we are moving forward with, in fact, just right now, I was just signing off on, we have to, we want to have a mobile unit at the State Farm Arena. And so there's a whole bunch of, Dick, I'll have to get in touch with you. There's a whole bunch of stuff that Marta wants us to sign off on. But yes, we are, we are, uh, doing our best to have, um, uh, mobile testing at as many of the mobile, at as many of the early voting sites as we can.
Oh, that's outstanding. And then there's a very well-known constituent on Facebook who does a lot of community activism and public service, who has been sharing his experience since he caught COVID-19. And he, he said that he tested negative three times while his symptoms actually got worse and worse and his breathing got worse. He never had a fever, not once. And by the fourth test, he, he drove himself to the emergency room, was immediately admitted because he was having the, the severe breathing problems. And when, when he was tested this fourth time, it came out positive. But what was alarming was the fact that he said that all this temperature testing is really not, that it's really not worth it because there are quite a few people who never have a fever. And that is not really a major indicator of whether or not someone has COVID-19 or, or is, you know, having symptoms of it. He had really started out with flu likes, just basic flu-like symptoms and no, no fever or anything. And so that caused me to really look at some of the other cases of people that were sharing their stories and finding out that there are a lot of people who really have no fever. So how are we addressing this situation when we have employees who are just having flu-like symptoms or cold symptoms? And they may be testing negative. What is the best thing to do?
Best thing to do, any, anyone who is having symptoms of any type, you know, that, you know, not just fever, but you know, runny nose and all that, they should stay home. We don't want people to come into work sick. So that's my, that's the first thing we tell people to do. And yes, you're completely right, Commissioner Hall, in that we know that many people who are COVID infected are in fact entirely asymptomatic, not just fever, they have no symptoms whatsoever, yet they can still, they can still spread it. So that's why we want, we recommend that people take, you know, take advantage of the testing that is available and go out and get actually tested because it is not enough to just go by, by, by fever. You know, if somebody comes in with a fever, that tells you something. But the fact that they don't have a fever doesn't mean that they're not infected.
Thank you so much, Dr. Paxton.
Anyone else, anything else for Dr. Paxton? Thank you, Commissioners. Madam CEO? Any, any other questions on this segment? If not, okay, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to go fairly quickly through the reopening plan. Next slide. Based on the targets, Commissioners, that we set at the beginning of the pandemic, as you can see, our indicators remain green with respect to the number of cases, our ability to execute the Board of Health testing plan, as well as our ability to procure and supply personal protective equipment. Just as a side note, we are watching closely our ability on gloves. Our EMA director is concerned about access at this time. So we're putting some contingency measures in place to make sure that we continue to have the access we have. But that is an area of concern for him. At this time, we do have enough to meet our distribution needs. So we do have that green, green up there. But that is an area that we are keeping an eye on. Next slide. We are continuing from an operational standpoint to keep our senior centers, IDD centers and art centers completely closed. We have a laser focus on and a tremendous effort directed toward elections at this time. And so we are not entirely focused on, on steps to reopen our government. All of the operational departments from IT to libraries, Dream, as well as the Board of Health significantly, have directed all key resources to supporting all that we have to do to make the 2020 election cycle and year successful. And so that is our primary focus in terms of steps to reopen. There's not a huge amount of effort directed toward there. I do want to highlight our continued operations with emergency essential functions. Those continue to operate. And as well, we continue to provide virtual and contactless service delivery where, where appropriate and have increased both investment and availability in those areas. We are getting questions from Commissioner constituents about access to our library buildings. At this time, we continue to view our elections efforts as a priority over that access to the buildings. And we really do stand behind our safety-first approach to access with respect to both our employees as well as the public. We are going to be looking into when the right time will be to provide that access. But again, as Gail Holloman, who leads our library system, has looked across the nation and at a study at access to library facilities across the nation, we've recognized that our approach to delivering the services are in step with larger systems as well. Next slide. Oh, on this slide, Commissioners, as you know, we had an outbreak of COVID-positive 19 cases at the county's elections warehouse this week. And that is something that we are sadly reporting to the board at this time. This report was provided to the board on Monday and sent that, and that time, as reflected here on this slide, there were two Fulton County employees who tested positive for COVID-19 and 11 contract employees who tested positive. And I do want to take a second to make a comment about those contract employees. Although a significant amount of the work that is done as election, in elections is provided by contract employees, we find that over the last several years, it is the same individuals. So they are as much our employees as the ones who work for us. We have a close connection with them. They are the peers and coworkers of our actual employees that are employed, employed by the county. So the effect of their being positive hits home just as hard as the fact that our employees themselves are becoming positive. In any event, at the time this report was presented to the board, we were at two Fulton County employees being positive. As of this morning, we are up to five employees, Fulton County employees within registration and elections that are positive, unfortunately. And up to 18 contractors that are positive. And that's a total of 23 individuals working in the warehouse who have tested positive. At the conclusion of our COVID-19 update, after you hear from the CFO, we will have Rick Baron, the Registration Director-in-Chief, to provide a more comprehensive report on our planned response. That is underway with respect to this outbreak. But I just wanted to make sure that for the benefit of the board and the public watching, that given the timing of this report, we do have an increase in registration and elections. We are testing individuals who work in that department on a daily basis. And so as of this morning, we're up to five employees and 18 contractors who are positive. Next slide. This is our overall total summary from the time that we began collecting the information on positive employees. And again, just as a correction, registration and elections is now five, making our grand total 131 employees. Next slide. The most significant activity we've had since the last time we reported facility cleanings by department to this Board of Commissioners is the major sanitizing effort that took place at our elections warehouse, consistent with the outbreak that we had there. We implemented our highest level of sanitization to that area, which included the barrier cleaning. Other than that, since the last meeting of the board, we continue with our daily janitorial sanitizing with our higher level, CDC-recommended sanitizer for all other Fulton County facilities. Next slide. Commissioner, as, Commissioners, as, as the manager stated, each meeting, we update the board on an operational highlight to demonstrate the significant work within the county that continues even as we contend with this pandemic. And this week, our highlight is a report on the preliminary recommendations of the technical assistance panel of the ULI or Urban Land Institute that we engaged. Just as a reminder, Commissioners, we have approximately $163 million worth of investment lined up for the Fulton Industrial Boulevard corridor. That includes $100 million in airport improvements, $32 million for a planned animal shelter, $12 million for a public safety training center, $6 million to stand up an alternate location and expanded emergency operations center, and over $13 million worth of road improvements over, over the next three years. And in order to make the best of that significant investment that the county plans to make in the FIB corridor over, over the next several years, we engage the technical assistance panel from ULI to help us ensure that the corresponding development that occurs on FIB is complementary to the efforts that, that the county is going to extend in that area. And so on this slide, it shows that the scope of that engagement includes key questions that we wanted ULI to help us to answer as we undertake redevelopment of this area. The first of which is, what are the market-driven redevelopment opportunities for the properties that Fulton County owns adjacent to the airport in that corridor? And the second is, how could the airport serve as a catalyst or as a driver of redevelopment just not only by its existence, but also by the improvements that are being made? And then finally, we wanted to tap the expertise of the ULI panel to help us identify the proposed strategies for redevelopment that include organization, management and financing opportunities that could help us achieve these redevelopment targets that we set. Next slide. And Commissioners, at the conclusion of today's meeting, I will send you a copy of ULI's preliminary report. They did an extensive SWOT analysis as their approach to doing this technical assistance that include a significant amount of engagement with stakeholders along the corridor, including business owners, elected officials, county officials and executive management. And so I won't go through the entire list that was bulleted in their SWOT analysis. Many of the things that you suspect from governing that area emerged in the SWOT analysis. I'll highlight a few of them. Under strength, they identified access to the interstate and downtown as a, a strength of the area. Second, the amount of county-owned land available for redevelopment was tagged as a strength. And the location of those properties in proximity to the airport, as well as the Chattahoochee River, was another strength. Weaknesses, as you can imagine, include the visual appearance that currently is there, which creates a poor first impression. And their lack of services for airport users was also identified and poor brand recognition for the Fulton County Executive Airport. Opportunities, and this one, some of you may or may not know, is that there's an active rail spur on the east side of the district along the Chattahoochee River. There's also a possibility for the extension of a MARTA line, which is called for in the county's transit master plan. And finally, some of the threats that were identified in their preliminary findings was that the area, the industrial area collectively is behind competition with other industrial areas. areas in terms of modernization and that executive, other executive airports were behind competition in that area as well. And that there's a little bit of uncertainty, actually quite some uncertainty with respect to the future of the government and who will control that area. The perception of crime was tagged as another external threat in the SWOT analysis as well. So again, there were significant bullet points under each of these. I just drew your attention, Commissioners, to a few of them, and you'll see it in the full report once I send it this afternoon. Next slide. I added this slide because I think this is the overall theme that they wanted to communicate, the redevelopment theme, which is that Fulton Industrial Boulevard has the ability to become a world-class industrial district that provides integrated services to meet the needs of the investors, build strong communities and preserve the natural environment. And I like that because I think it is in line with where this board wants to see and take that district in the future. Next slide. Commissioners, this final slide, again, lists preliminary recommendations about short, medium and long-term redevelopment targets. You'll get to review them in detail when the report is provided. And I appreciate the Commissioners who did have an opportunity and were invited to participate in the in the tap. And you all may already have a copy of it. So I'll forward it to the remainder of you. But just to highlight a few of the short-term goals will be development of a master plan for Aviation Circle, which is the non-aeronautical property just outside the airport to identify potential redevelopment partners and to rewrite the overlay of the zoning in the district. That is a direct responsibility of this board. The zoning overlay is quite dated, and I think that bringing a recommendation to the board about a new zoning vision for this area is going to be an important first next step. So look forward to that. In terms of medium-term target, it would be to implement whatever redevelopment plan we come up with in partnership with someone that we secure to do that work. And then in terms of long-term, the ULI recommends that we look to develop a program for a hotel and conference center in the district, extend transit access even beyond what we have recommended in the Transit Master Plan in partnership with MARTA, as well as implementing permanent improvements in the district. I'd like to close the presentation with what we see as the immediate next steps for this ULI technical assistance effort. It will be to conclude it, number one, and bring back the leadership of the ULI to the board to present the final recommendations. We suspect that will be ready in November, within a month or two. And second, we would like to move forward with concluding the airport master plan, which got kicked off in May of this year, and that we expect to conclude with the help of Michael Baker, who is our consultant. We expect to conclude that effort in the fall of 2021. Now, the FAA approval process takes about six months, and so we anticipate that their approval will follow sometime in the spring of 2022. And the final next step that we anticipate you'll see come forward here in the next several months is that we will be looking to issue an RFP to identify a master developer for the non-aeronautical properties that the county has control over, which are on near or around around the airport. So that is a quick summary of that effort. Again, I think the county manager said in his remarks that it is the most significant redevelopment effort or economic development effort that the county will undertake here in the near future. And so there is a lot of investment and a lot of excitement and a lot of improvement that is tagged to this effort. And we look forward to continuing to update the board on the progress of this effort. Next slide. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I can take any questions about our reopening targets as well as our employee positives and the ULI update. I would ask that if there are specific questions about the elections outbreak, that we wait and allow Mr. Baron to give us some more information before we dive into those specific questions.
Okay, with the exception of any elections questions, anything for the COO at this time?
Yes, this is Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Anna, for such a great presentation. I have a question because when you were speaking about the COVID positive employees numbers, you mentioned about the contractors who actually contracted COVID-19. And that made me think about, do we have other cases in the county where there were non-county employees who actually got COVID-19?
I don't have the answer to that question. Kenneth Herman may know the answer to that question. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but we have been tracking that fairly closely. But I'm not sure off the top of my head if I'm aware of any non-employee but contractors that have been working in facilities that were tested positive. We may have had some earlier on, but neither Sharon and I, who are sitting here next to each other, can think of the exact details about it. But Commissioner Hall, we can get you that information after researching it with the Chief Human Resource Officer.
Thank you. Thank you. That would be great because I almost want to say I recall that there may have been a janitorial worker that had COVID, who went through several offices or floors of the county government center early on, and we had to clean those floors back then. I think the 10th floor was one of them. So when you reported on the eighteen contractors, it just made me think about, we really need to keep track of those contract employees. We're keeping, you're keeping a great tabs on the county employees, but we do need to do the contractors as well.
And we can add that to the report, Commissioner Hall. I think that's a very good suggestion. We will add any positives that we're aware of, of contract employees that work in our facilities or alongside our employees. I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, and then the other thing is, I was trying to understand how the airport update was considered part of the reopening plan because the airport has not been shut down at all.
You're correct, Commissioner. Again, each board meeting, what we try to do along with our reopening plan is provide information or highlight an operational area that is continuing, where work is going on despite our COVID efforts. And so it is not directly related to COVID, but we do believe that it's important to keep the board abreast of the additional work that the county is doing and achievements within the county, even as we face the pandemic.
I think it's so important that it really needs to be its own separate reporting update, not buried inside of the COVID-19 updates because it is just that important. And I was happy to be one of those Commissioners that actually attended the tap. It was an outstanding tour and update on what's going on with the airport.
Anything else?
I have a question, please.
Commissioner Hausman?
Yeah, following up on the tap visit, it was very informative and very thorough, and I was happy to be able to be a part of it. Don't think I received the final report. I just asked my staff. They can't locate it either. So if you're sending it out to the full board, please include those of us that were on the on the tour.
For sure, Commissioner Hausman. I will be sending it to the full board.
Thank you very much. And then also with regard to reopening the libraries, I appreciate your update on that. I certainly appreciate the staff, our library staff, that has stepped up to the plate to help with the elections. I totally understand that we can't have them be our elections team, part of our elections team, and run the libraries as normal. So that's totally understandable. But it is the number one question I'm getting from the community, especially now that kids are back in school, about when will our libraries reopen? So I hope that we are looking at opening sometime in November after the elections, at least on a limited basis, because it is very important to the community. So I want to encourage you to continue to focus on when we can provide that service once again to the community.
Absolutely, Commissioner. We are looking at when it will be appropriate to do that. I cannot commit that that will be sometime in November, but it is important to us to have our libraries accessed by our constituents as well. But I just don't want to leave the impression that November is the date that we're looking at to do that.
Well, again, it's hard for them to understand if the schools are open, why the libraries are not. I think a phased-in approach, you know, a few days a week perhaps initially, would be very welcome by the community. So please, please take it seriously and do everything we can to at least provide some service to the community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, just one thing, and I wanted to amplify Commissioner Hausman's points on the libraries and then also just offer up for consideration, even if there are opportunities that we could consider where it's just opening for, you know, certain age groups, whether it's, you know, the library could be open on a portion of a day for children, school-aged children, et cetera. This is the number one thing that is getting raised to me as well, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Madam COO.
No, you're going to actually, in this section, you're going to ask about the meetings.
What?
The reopening section. Meetings. This is the section in conjunction with reopening.
Oh, county attorney. Well.
You told me.
I did. While we're talking about reopening here, Commissioner Hausman had raised a question as to when we might consider meeting in person again. And we took a survey, and it was not conclusive, to be honest with you. But I would just say that from my perspective, I'm here every day anyway, so it really doesn't matter to me. However, the facts seem to be that we need to be concerned about, I mean, sending the wrong message to people, to the public, if we open. But I'm open to whatever you want to do because I'm here. But I think that the indicators seem to be that we're coming into, even if we, well, some say second phase, some say we're still in the first phase. I'm not sure where we are, other than the fact that the numbers seem to be increasing again. Maybe we need to be cautious. And I think, Mr. Manager, when you and I talked and COO talked, your feeling was that we should not yet, so.
I would agree.
Okay, Commissioners, any, so the other thing is related to this. We have two meetings in November and probably sometime in December, either the first or the second. I believe the Assembly Hall should be finished, so that may be an appropriate time to resume, assuming the virus is under control rather than waiting until next year. But that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Chair?
With the virtual meetings. Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, I do, I do think for us to consider that question, the question, I mean, the understanding where we would be having the meetings is really kind of germane to that question. All of us crowding into a room and having a meeting is definitely one thing versus being in Assembly Hall where we can be assured we've got folks adequately spaced and also understanding if we're going to have it, what, you know, what the actual precautionary measures and so forth would be. But I'm not in favor of us getting together in a in a closed space, which that seems to be what our alternative would be, you know, at the moment, until Assembly Hall reopens. So that may be a good point in time to have us come back.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Hausman?
You know, I appreciate the safety concerns as well. And, you know, I also understand that we've asked a lot of our employees to work every day. And so I'm struggling with the appropriateness in the message it sends, since we mentioned the message it sends, that we're asking them to work and we're still conducting our business virtually. So I don't want to put our employees at any kind of risk that we're not taking ourselves. And that was the reason I brought it forward. I'm willing to meet in person with the appropriate protections in place, just as we're asking our employees to do.
Okay, any other thoughts about meeting in person?
I'd be okay with that as well, as long as we're taking social distancing and safety precautions. You know, at the end of the day, we're government servants. And, you know, my staff is certainly working in the office in person when required. They're doing some work from home. But I think it's something to look at. If we're doing it safely and distancing properly, I do not think that would be sending the wrong message. I know some of our city councils have started to meet in person. Union City in my district is meeting, is meeting in person. The city of Palmetto is meeting in person, and some are not. So again, I'd be open to doing it as long as we're doing it safely at a social distance. Obviously, I don't want to get sick or get anyone in my family sick either. But there's a portion of this where the public does expect us to be on the job, not that any of us are not. But, you know, again, this is a government emergency that we've been in most of the year, and a lot of people's attitude is, okay, well, where's the government? It's time, we want to see you stepping up to the plate here, just like those bus drivers and school teachers that are in those classrooms as well. Not that, not that any of us are running and hiding for cover, but I would be open to safely having meetings in person. As you know, I've been here for every meeting that we've had in person as well. So that's my comment.
Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Hall. I have a question as well as a comment. First, my question is, does anyone know what the adequate number is of people by the space size? Because we have heard, don't have more than ten people in a space at the same time. And but what is the actual appropriate number of people to have in a space depending on the size of that space?
I think he's still with us.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, Anna.
I was just saying, Commissioner Hall, that I think we still have Dr. Paxton with us, if she can help us answer that question.
Yes, I can. I mean, it all just comes down to a simple thing about can you maintain the, you know, the six feet sort of radius around you? So it doesn't matter, you know, it really doesn't matter about, I wouldn't say it's like ten to a room, because it depends on what the room size is. So if you just refocus and just think about, you know, can you maintain the six feet of distance, then it really doesn't matter how many people in that are, I mean, okay, it matters less how many people are in that room if you can maintain, if you can maintain the distance. We do, I do believe that according to the executive order, I believe it's still at a maximum of fifty, but I would have to check that. So, but I believe that that is the current, the current maximum. But I would say concentrate more on can you maintain the adequate amount of distance? And also to remember that because there is aerosolization, the fewest number of people that you can have in a room, the better you are. So, I mean, I, so I think there's no set formula, but I would keep those two points in mind.
Two for meeting in person. Anyone else for meeting in person?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
I'm not done. So I do want to, my statement is this. I heard Commissioner Carr mention that he has heard from people about seeing government, but heard from people about seeing government, but I have heard from people about seeing government, but not in person. As a matter of fact, when there was some kind of meeting that was held in the Fulton County Government Center with, I think it was, the Registrations and Elections Board met, and someone who attended that board meeting later tested positive for COVID-19, one of my constituents literally called me and was cursing and angry that we would even put them in that situation to come together face-to-face for a meeting, and they said, why in the world would we do that when we have Zoom and everyone has become accustomed to Zoom, and it's a lot easier even for those people who don't have transportation, who can possibly jump on the computer or their phone and get on the Zoom? And this has been the consensus across my district with the, with people. I even had a senior who borrowed the computer of one of the children who lived down the street from her so that she could jump on the Zoom, because she didn't have a computer or access to the Internet. So people are making a way to actually attend these meetings where they don't have to be put in the position of being exposed, and I think we need to take that into account.
Okay, we have two. Commissioner Hausman, you want to be heard again?
Yes, I appreciate your, your answer, Dr. Paxton. I'm not sure if you mean if it's just a wide-open room with no safeguards in place, like the plexiglass dividers that we had when we were previously meeting, or if you're just talking about a wide-open room?
Well, you know, again, it's hard to be totally specific, because, again, as we learn more and we learn about aerosolization, you know, it depends what the plexiglass looks like, because if you have just a small piece of plexiglass, you know, droplets can go over it or aerosolization. So I'm, I'm being, I know uncomfortably vague about this, the best thing is if you can have a wide-open room, such as the one, like the old, you know, meeting room that, that I've been in before, that is certainly better than having, than meeting in one of the small, the smaller ones. You know, it's just, you know, it, it, it's almost that you kind of have to look at each situation and see whether or not it, it meets the criterion that you like to follow.
Again, and I'm not being critical, but I'm watching this Zoom, and I see the chairman, no mask on, talking closely with a staff member. So, I mean, there's, it, it's just, we're at the point now where I think we've all gone out to dinner, we've all done things, you know, in public, but we've learned to be careful. So I just, again, if we're asking our employees to do things, I just feel that it's the right thing to do, I'm sending a message that we're willing to do it ourselves. Group may not agree, but that's my position.
Mrs. Chairman, I have not been able to get a word in it yet, but.
Of course.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that I agree with Commissioner Hausman on the, on the message. If we're going to ask our employees to come in live, then I think we ought to try to do that as well, with all the precautions that we can possibly, possibly use. And, and following up on Commissioner Carr's comment about city councils meeting, I understand the Sandy Springs City Council has met recently live for the first time in quite some time, and I don't see it as a real, as something we absolutely have to do, but, but I think if we're asking our employees to come in, then I'm comfortable coming in with the adequate precautions.
All right, that's three. Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Hall. I just want to make it clear that I'm comfortable coming in. I've been around my district at events, you can look at my Facebook page and see me feeding the seniors and everything, but I do not want to put additional employees at risk, that I will not agree with. But as far as myself, I don't have a problem with it at all. If the employees want to, who support us, want to put themselves at risk, that is up to them, but I don't want to be responsible for making someone else have to put themselves in a situ-
So is that, is that in-person, Commissioner Hall?
For me, absolutely, yes.
All right, that's four. That's it. So Madam Clerk, would you take the, whatever advertising you have to do for the next meeting, be a virtual meeting on the third floor? Not virtual, in-person meeting on the third floor, you know, when you have to advertise. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, and Mr. Ellis?
If we're going to do that, and again, I, I have no objection to meeting in person, but I do think we are stupid if we're meeting in person and we do not have a clear plan for how that meeting is going to occur. These other folks that are meeting, they're meeting in their normal Assembly Hall-type environments, which were designed for, you know, public meetings. You know, we're talking about coming in in a COVID environment and meeting in a room, which we've never met in, for a large public meeting, and I don't know how that's being set up. So as you advertise it, that's one thing, but I would like to see, you know, a clear communication, not only for the commissioners, the commissioner's staff, but all of our county management staff and other staff who would be asked to participate in these meetings, about how that will actually occur in a, in the right fashion, because if it goes off wrong, you know, sentiment or not, it's going to look pretty dang stupid. So, you know, that's, the question's a fair question, but we've not been provided an answer about how the meeting would actually be conducted in this alternative space. So as we go, go forth with that, I'd like to see, you know, kind of that information sort of posthaste.
All right, Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager on the way in?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, I think the, responding to what just was raised by Commissioner Ellis, our preference would be to come back on the fourth and provide those details and plans in this virtual setting. Honestly, I don't think we've got the management bandwidth to take on figuring all this out in the two weeks prior to this election. And by the time that we present this to you on the fourth, we can also inform you as to explicit dates as it relates to Assembly Hall, where, again, you have ample room and protections can be put in place. So what, if you, if you do or have decided to do this, I would implore you to not try to do it on the fourth, but allow the plan to be presented, and then take a sanity check as to whether or not you want to do that in-person before Assembly Hall is open. But I would not do-
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? All right, so on the fourth, we'll have a virtual meeting, and the manager will present a plan for in-person meetings thereafter. Everybody's okay with that? Hearing no objections, that's how we'll, okay.
Going back to Madam COO.
Madam COO.
CFO.
See?
I thought she was going to transition to-
I think we're ready.
Okay.
All right, Madam CFO.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sharon Whitmore, Chief Financial Officers. We do have a brief CARES Act Fund update for you today. Next slide, please. As the manager indicated in his opening remarks, through the 16th of October, we had expended a total of 57.3 of the 104 million that was made available to us under the Act. We have allocated 102.2 million of the 104, leaving 1.8 remaining in reserve for a second wave. Next slide, please. Since our last meeting, we have had one minor change to the, the budgeted allocation of the CARES Act Fund. On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see that we increased operational stability by 300,000, pulling that from the second-wave reserve. Those funds were provided specifically to the allocation that we have for election support from the CARES Act to respond directly to the outbreak in the election warehouse. On the right-hand side of the slide, we're sharing with you the changes that were made to the commitments. You'll see that 300,000 for the additional elections allocation, and we also reobligated the 400,000 that we showed in the last report for the job training program as being, in the last report, we showed it as being unobligated, and in this report, we're showing that we've reobligated it to the, the job training program. Next slide, please. This slide provides you with a, a view of the current outstanding purchase orders in the CARES Act Fund. Currently, we have a total of 41.3 million dollars in open purchase orders, of which we have paid out approximately 13.6 against those open purchase orders. Additionally, we have already issued and fully closed out 6.7 million in purchase orders, which would bring the total amount of purchase orders that we've issued against the fund to 48.1, and the total amount of expenditures incurred against those purchase orders to 20 million, 20.4 million. Of note, in the list of outstanding purchase orders, you will see at the, the top of this, sort of at the top of the screen, we have about 1.7 million that's been encumbered with Dell Marketing Corp. for laptop purchases for our virtual continuation of our remote workforce and teleworking capabilities. Those devices have been received, the majority of those devices have been received, and we're in the process of reconciling and moving forward with the payment for those devices. Farther down the list, you'll see an 8.6 million dollar purchase order with Baccotic Pathology Associates. We have expended 2.7 million against that 8.6. That purchase order is for the testing services that are being provided to the Board of Health for all of the testing sites, fixed and mobile testing sites. The next item of note is a little farther down the list on the left-hand side, Dominion Voting Systems, Inc. We have encumbered about $2 million with Dominion for additional voting equipment-related licenses, scanners, as well as some support staff now to be able to respond to the outbreak at the warehouse. That is one of the things that you'll hear from the elections director shortly. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, the other two large purchase orders that we have outstanding, the first one is with Goodwill Industries of Georgia, the 4.5 million dollars for the job training program, and we are just beginning to receive invoices against that encumbrance. And then the last item of note is the contract that was entered into with Corp. for the staffing of our mobile testing sites, and we have received invoices against that and paid them totaling $1 million. That's where we stand with our current encumbrances against the fund in our POs. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes all of the remaining placeholders and commitments against the CARES Act Fund, as well as dispersments that have occurred outside of the purchase order process. On the left-hand side of the screen, under the placeholder section, you'll see that our placeholder's balance is now 2.9 million. The largest component of that balance is the outstanding placeholder we have for PPE. This will allow us to continue to acquire PPE for our cash that we have established to support county's operations, as well as to provide the PPE for the municipalities that was promised to them as well. And the, the second-largest item in, in that particular category is the balance of the funds that have been committed to the testing program, 872,000, on which the Board of Health is still submitting to us their, their requests for the use of, of those funds. Down below in the commitment section, we have about 14.2 million remaining in our commitments item, the two largest components of that being 10.4 million remaining in the municipal relief fund that the Board established, and then 1.5 million remaining in the community needs fund. The majority of that 1.5 million is related to the, the artist program that we've established, and Dr. Rochelle and the Finance Department, along with purchasing, are working to push all of the remaining payments against that fund through the process as quickly as possible. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the dispersments that have been made outside of the purchase order process, and at the very top, the, the 14.5 million is the payments that have been made for the community relief program. Other than the 4.5 million, that's for the job training program, because that is part of a, a purchase order. And then, of course, the hazard pay for employees that was paid earlier in the year is a significant item. And then farther down, the third line up from the bottom of the list, the municipal reimbursement program. We've now paid a total of 14.5 million for, for that program, bringing the total dispersments other than payments made for purchase orders to 36.8 million. We add that to the amount from the previous slide on the purchase order, that gives you the total paid of 57.2. Next slide, please. This is a quick view of the current status of the community relief fund. A total of 21 million dollars has been budgeted, fully committed, and we've paid out a total of 14.6. The balance of what's remaining is, is the, predominantly in the job training category, that, that bottom category, job training, and then the small business assistance, which is the artists program. Next slide, please. The last slide that we have today is an update on the municipal reimbursement program. As the manager indicated in his opening remarks, we have four municipalities that have been fully paid out their allocation. Those municipalities are Chattahoochee Hills, Alpharetta, College Park, and the city of Roswell. The Finance Department continues to work with the cities in reviewing the documentation that they've provided for support against the 30% advance payments that were received, as well as additional support that's being provided for additional expenditures. They're also providing technical assistance to the cities where requested, and have scheduled a technical assistance meeting with the city of South Fulton for later this week, and will be scheduling another roundtable discussion sometime next week as well, in order to offer any cities who have any outstanding concerns or questions an opportunity to address those with the full group that's providing the review process here. So with that, in summary of the 25 million that the Board has allocated, we've paid out 14.5 million and have 16 million to go. And with that, that concludes the report for this, for this meeting, and I'm happy to take any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions? More at this time? Okay, thank you. Madam COO, elections?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have to switch slide decks. I'm not sure who's navigating on your end, Mr. Chairman, but we do have a set of election slides. They were not previously presented to the Board, I don't believe, because they were under development as of this morning, the, the, everything is rapidly transforming as it relates to this outbreak, so we appreciate the Board's indulgence. Here it is.
Okay, we're ready. Mr. Barron?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. We've had, as you, as you've heard, a COVID-out- heard, a COVID outbreak in our warehouse, five permanent employees and eighteen contractors have been infected. We are transferring knowledge between the current management staff there and those that are assuming other roles virtually. We are sourcing key duties through a network of partners that we that we have in place. We are well positioned going forward, as you will see in the next slide. So with the absentee ballot drop boxes, we will be using corporate temps in the Elections Group to make this that task happen. Early voting location supplies, which includes delivery of supplies, corporate temps, and the Election Group. Election Day preparation, the BMD installation, logic and accuracy testing for all equipment is going to be handled by Dominion and the Election Group. Poll pad programming will be Dominion, No Ink, and the Election Group. Packing of supplies for Election Day will be corporate temps. Creating cards for Election Day machines will be Dominion and election staff. And then turnover of early voting machines to prep for Election Day will be Dominion, election staff, and the Elections Group. Next slide. What we've done out in the warehouse is we've sanitized it with a thirty-day germicidal barrier. We leased space at the Georgia World Congress Center. We moved all of our election equipment to the Georgia World Congress Center last weekend for greater social distancing. We have a hundred and ten thousand square foot space out there to to prep everything through logic and accuracy testing. We've done, we're doing inspections of all other work areas, PPP, PPE spot checks, additional social distancing for all staff, and we we will be conducting an employee Q and A with Board of Health. We've also put in UV lights out at the warehouse in addition to more HEPA filters, too. We're keeping, we've got security out there at all the doors so that we've been able to open up the garage doors and and some of the other outer doors to get circulation through there as well. Next slide, please. Poll worker masks are required, social distancing markers, styluses sanitized between voters, hand sanitizers available in those polling places, and masks will be available for those who don't have them in our polling places. Next slide, please. So the staffing plan for Election Day, we we needed twenty-seven hundred and eighty poll workers for Election Day. Currently, we have three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine poll workers assigned. That's over four hundred plus beyond the minimum minimum requirements. In addition, we will have five hundred and ten line managers out in the field on Election Day, and we will have another two hundred and fifty-five deputy registrars in the polling places on Election Day to handle canceling absentee ballots that need to be canceled in the polling place. Two hundred Fulton County employees will be on standby for election support on Election Day as well. Next slide. And I think one thing I need to say, too, before, you know, I was think just thinking about the partners that we have on a previous slide. I don't, one thing that that story doesn't tell, if you go back two slides, I think, where it said one more, two, one more. These are all the partners we have, but what this story does not tell is all of the behind-the-scenes individuals with the county that are helping with the election. From the county managers, executive staff, to the Strategy Office, External Affairs, Dream, the libraries, the libraries have a a number of employees that have stepped forward and are helping us. Human Resources, the policing agencies, finance, purchasing, departments that I'm not mentioning, I apologize, but one thing that that we have here at Fulton County with regard to making this election come off smoothly is teamwork, and it goes not only from the Elections Department, but it goes through all the departments that are helping us, and and that's a credit to the leadership of Dick Anderson and also Chairman Pitts, who's been involved a lot throughout this whole process. So I think going going forward here, we can, we can be real proud of the effort that that is being expended by the county to make sure this runs smoothly, especially with this COVID outbreak. Okay, please return to next slide. Yeah, so we've processed about two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty thousand absentee by mail applications. More than thirty-six thousand of those, you can see are duplicates and rejections. We've mailed two thousand, two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-two, and we have now received eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-four by mail. Approximately, a little over twenty-two thousand out ballot by mail applications have been canceled though so far. So more than half of the the ballots have either been received or have been canceled by by voters that are going in to vote in in the polling places. Next slide. Overall, the turnout, I've got some updated figures from this. That was through Monday, but through last night, we've had one hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-three people vote early. We, in addition to the eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight by mail, that is two hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and twenty-seven people have voted, which is forty point four percent of the projected turnout we have of six hundred and twenty thousand, which would be a an eighty percent, that would be an eighty percent turnout for Election Day, which would be a significant rec increase over the record of seventy-four percent in two thousand and eight. But we are, we are definitely on target to hit that eighty percent number of people voting before Election Day, being that we have a number of early voting days to go and a number of days to receive absentee by mail still. But State Farm is at twenty-three thousand one hundred and thirty voters so far, Alpharetta Library, seventy-seven hundred and one, OC Library, seventy-three oh one, Buckhead Library, fifty-five eighty-three, and then Northside Library is fifth with fifty-five hundred and thirty-three voters. Palmetto Library also opened on Monday, and that will be open through the remaining, the remainder of early voting through the thirtieth. Next slide. We do have that wait time tool now, which is live through the Fulton Votes app, also on our website. That has been a a nice tool for the voters, and they can, since you can vote anywhere on Election Day, you can go through there and make, pick and choose whichever site you want to go to based on the current wait time. The text in each of those sites are updating those on a regular basis. Next slide. And this is the the mobile schedule. You can see on the schedule today, the twenty-first, Mount Vernon Baptist Church and Roselle Fan Recreation Center are the two places where the buses have been. If you get the opportunity to go out and take a look at the buses, they, I I visited one on Sunday, and it's great staff there, and they said they've been receiving nothing but but compliments on on the the bus visiting all of the sites. Next slide. This shows that Palmetto Early Voting is now open. It opened on Monday, and we do have now a a ballot box, ballot drop box in Chattahoochee Hills, and that was paid for from a grant through the Southern Poverty Law Center, along with many of the other drop boxes that we have. That grant that we received through the Southern Poverty Law Center helped with that. Next slide. We've got those three key messages. Voting early is safe and easy. Skip the lines. Vote early, October twelfth through the thirtieth. We will be open eight to six, the remainder of this week through Saturday, ten to six on Sunday. Next week, we are open seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. And then on Election Day, it's critical that voters know before they go. We we've had ninety-one polling place additions since the June election, and we want to make sure that voters check those, check the My Voter page, or make sure it be to to read the mail, any of the flyers that they received, or the precinct cards that have their new polling places on them. Next slide. And these, of course, this is part of the information campaign that we showed you at the last one with the picture of voting early. And I've seen also an early voting on one of the digital billboards. I I've noticed that the High Museum is promoted over by McCamish Pavilion on on I-75. Next slide. And again, know before you go, there's the My Voter page web address. Check that My Voter page in case your Election Day polling place has changed. You need to vote in your assigned location on Election Day. You can vote anywhere during the early voting period. Next slide. And now I can take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have some.
Okay, Commissioner Morris?
Couple things, Mr. Baron. How many total voters do we have in Fulton County? What would be a hundred percent turnout?
Be just over seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, so two fifty voted already. So that's, I don't know.
We, the turnout is thirty-one point sixty-one percent.
Say about thirty-something, yeah. That's, that's pretty impressive for for the date.
We're averaging about seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four a day during early voting. It's a, the Saturday through yesterday, we're a little slower than last week.
Yeah. Second question is on Nextdoor. There've been several people who have posted, and you know what Nextdoor is, Mr. Baron?
Yes.
There've been several people in my area who have posted that they've gotten notices about their polling place on Election Day and that they have gone online and because they noticed they change, and they've gone online, and on, they say online, it shows a different polling place than the card they're getting.
And you, okay.
I mean, about, I'd say about four or five folks have done that. I don't know what that means.
Let me all, I will look into that.
Okay, that would be great.
And if you happen to see, know of any specific examples, I I would love to know that.
Well, next time I, next time I see one, I'll try to, I mean, they don't give specifics about where, you know, they're just a name and a neighborhood. They don't give specifics about their their polling place or what they're seeing in the card and the and the website. But there've been enough of them that it that it caused me a little concern. Thank you for looking into that.
You're welcome.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
He didn't, they didn't hear you.
Other questions? Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question or two.
All right, Commissioner Hausman?
First of all, I just want to extend my best wishes to those that have gotten COVID through their speedy recovery. And I know y'all have been through an awful lot. You've done a really good job of regrouping and trying to make it happen in in a bad situation. So I want to thank the team for that. I know y'all have also worked well with the Secretary of State, and they're helping you out, too. And I'm glad to see that as well after what we went through in the primary. It's really good to see a good working relationship with the state, because it helps all of us. So thank you for that. The precinct card mailers have gone out, is that right?
Yes.
When did they go out?
Over, the previous two weeks, they went out.
Okay, okay, good. Because, you know, people want to know that that information. And then I want to tell you, I voted at the bus. It was fabulous. I'm getting lots of comments about it. I think that people really think we're doing an excellent job making voting available, and that bus really helps. On your schedule, you you're talking about overflow the last couple of days?
Yes.
And then I don't know what you're going to do on Election Day. I saw your vote tallies of the number of voters. I'm assuming you're going to deploy the bus where you've got the largest number of of people voting, or can you just speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, we had planned on having the the buses do do overflow at the two busiest sites, as long as they weren't one of the three mega sites. The only mega site that's in the top, top five is State Farm. We definitely wouldn't put one there. The next two, the busiest sites are Alpharetta Library and OC Library. So we were going to have to, right, those are the busiest ones right now. We're going to have to look and see how we can put those, find a place for those buses at the busiest sites on the last two days to accommodate that overflow. And now that we're getting a picture of that, we'll, we will definitely explore where we can put those.
And neither one of those locations have a lot of parking, so
Yeah.
I think that that might be a little difficult, but I mean, maybe some nearby parking lot or something. And then I'll just tell you, I get lots of compliments about State Farm. Folks from North Fulton are taking Marida and going down there. Easy in and out. It's all over social media. So great partnership with the Hox, and so I just wanted to comment on that, too. But where do you think the buses will be on Election Day itself?
The only way we'll put the buses out on Election Day is in an emergency situation. Because it's harder for us to, we have to assign those specifically to a place. They can't, during early voting, we can put them at any of the locations on the last two days, but we can't do that on Election Day.
So if you had a location that had some kind of problem or just a swamped with folks, you're going to send the bus over there?
Yes.
All right, all right. Thank you again.
Welcome.
Other questions?
Had a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the update and, you know, great work on the early voting effort, you know, and definitely being very well received and obviously having a big impact so far. One question for you on that, and maybe you said it and I missed it, the number of votes we received through the mobile units. Do you have that number handy?
Yes, yes. The mobile voting bus one has had three thou, or no, two thousand six hundred and two votes, and mobile voting bus two is at three thousand three hundred and seven.
Okay, all right, great. I want to shift gears and ask you a couple of questions really about Election Day itself. I mean, obviously, we're having a lot of great success with early voting, which was a key aspect of our plan. So glad to see that that appears to be kind of moving, moving along, you know, great, and we're moving towards those targets. But we've got, you know, we, in an Election Day, we've obviously built in a significant number of more sites, which is great, but it also opens up, you know, that many more opportunities for something to go wrong. And, you know, we've got the precinct card changes and all that sort of stuff going out, and people potentially being confused because of different locations. So that's a known thing. But I guess the, my, my larger question really kind of relates to our confidence in and our planning around, and I guess certainly the the impact of what we had recently when the COVID outbreak, of being able to logistically get all these set up and make sure, ensure that they're opening up on time and that supplies are there, et cetera, right? You know, because all of our great efforts could just go, you know, you know, headline rescue, if you will, kind of just could go out the window with just some sort of, you know, a couple of snafus on Election Day. So I just want to get a sense from you on, you know, kind of that Election Day planning, where you feel we are at with that right now from a logistics standpoint. Now, let's sort of comment generally, and then I got a couple of other specifics relating to election, relating to poll workers.
Well, even with the the COVID outbreak, I mean, the the biggest concern that I've had, of course, is adding all of those polling locations ahead of, ahead of Election Day. So that messaging, getting that message out is is the most important thing for us between now and then. I think with regard to all of the logistics, with all of the partners that we've put in place, for example, right now, we've got twenty-two individuals from Dominion out at Georgia World Congress Center in addition to another another thirty county staff and people from corporate temps that are in place either at the warehouse or also at Georgia World Congress, putting together all of the supplies. We've, we were lucky enough to be chosen by the election group to have three staff that are in, have been embedded in our office uh, to, to help us go make process changes throughout this, 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 uh, these last few months. Um, two of them are former election directors in, in counties and one of them was in charge of certifying all voting systems in the United States and before that in California. Those individuals have taken up, um, some, some more management duties within the department to help us get through this COVID outbreak. In addition, we are having daily meetings and, uh, with, with the elections group as well as, as with, um, members of my staff that are, that are out, um, and sick, but they are still able to work. And so we are making sure that everything that we needed to do going with, with our current staff will get done with the new people that are in place. And I think, um, I think also, given the support that we've, we've received from the county manager staff to get, to make sure that we aren't missing anything, we've been able to put some redundancies in place. For example, with regard to making sure calls are going to go out personally to all of the polling places ahead of election day to make sure there is someone there, there, that they will open on time on election day. Uh, we've overstaffed all of the polling places. All of those people are being trained. And I actually, because of the way we restructured the testing, I feel much better about the knowledge base that, that we've imparted upon the poll workers than we've ever done before. Also, a hundred, a hundred and two of the poll managers that are going to be working, that are newer, that will be working in November, they shadowed managers uh, during the Congressional District Five election in order for them to be ready to go on election day. But I, I do agree with you about the ninety-one polling places. We, we're, we're trying, I'm trying to hammer that message home every day to get out there and look at the My Voter page or to be looking in the mail if people haven't already received it, looking for those precinct cards. Because a lot of voters have been impacted by those changes.
So continue, a couple of questions on the, on the sites, just for, I guess contingency, this really is sort of a contingency planning question. If, if, for example, any of these sites, you know, we, we learned very late that, you know, it's not going to be usable, right, for whatever reason. Uh, you know, property damage, COVID, et cetera. Um, I guess you potentially got at least two, you got these two buses which could be deployed to those sites, but what happens if you have like more than, more than two sites? Um, can you, you know, a day before election, you know, do we have the ability to combine two locations, you know, how does that, how does that?
Yes, I mean, if we had something happen and I think our, my board is going to meet on Friday with regard to the, there's a security plan, uh, that Ann, um, Anna Roach is leading, uh, a security team. And one of the things that they tasked our board with doing is to make sure that if we need to do an emergency consolidations, that, that I'm legally able to get that done quickly and have the board uh, give me that legal authority to go ahead and do that, um, at a moment's notice.
Okay. Uh, my, my last sort of big question or really relates around election day workers. Uh, I know we've got this very large number of workers signed up, right? Um, and a lot, and a lot more poll managers as well. Um, but at the last, you know, during the last cycle, we also saw a number of people decide they weren't going to show up on election day. Uh, for a variety of reasons. Um, we are seeing a trend up in COVID numbers, so that is a risk, I guess, that uh, people decide they're just not going to show up. But I guess a bigger question, you know, given that a lot of these folks are, I guess I would classify them as more, you know, volunteer types, if you will. Um, did they know right now? Have they been told, yes, you did went through the training, yes, you are going to be utilized and this is the location you will be at? Have they been given instructions or is there some risk that these folks signed up and they say, well, I hadn't heard anything from Fulton County, so I guess I'm going to be free on election day. So, you know, I'm, I'm heading out of town. I mean, I guess what, how are we
All of these, down these folks. All of these individuals have, have given us, have, have filled out their paperwork. Um, one of the most important things that they do, uh, that we know they're committed is when they, they turn over their, their Bank of America pay card because then that's when they give us a lot of personal information. And we assign them for training based on that form. Training is going through November first. It seems like the people that have volunteered to work this election are, seem committed and motivated to, to work no matter what. We've also got that COVID stipend out there for that, that's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars to everyone that works on election day in order to make sure that that as an additional, I guess, incentive for them to show up. But we've even had a number of individuals that have failed the, the poll worker exam that have come back and retaken another class and then passed the exam. So even, even failing an exam isn't keeping people from, from dropping out this time. Uh, the number, we, we are not seeing dropouts ahead of this election the way we did in June. So I, I'm feeling comfortable and plus we've overstaffed the sites. We, we actually, um, in the twenty-seven hundred and eighty individuals, we had overstaffed each one of the sites by one, but now we've got, we're going to have an extra person there. We've got an extra pool of workers from the county that will be there and then we'll also have the line managers on top of that. Those line managers are all going to have, uh, uh, the line manager teams, at least one of them will have an iPad so that they can direct voters to the correct locations if necessary.
That's, that's helpful and I, but I guess really what maybe I'll just get to the heart of my question is, and because I've heard this from folks who are signed up, they've said, you know, I've gone through the training, I've signed up, et cetera. But I've heard nothing back from Fulton County about where I'm going to be assigned. And, and, you know, I mean, we are, it is just around the corner, right? And um, necessarily just go ahead and, you know, further lock them down to say, you know, you're up to speed, here's some reminders, you know, election day is coming up, you're going to be at this particular location. You know, please advise us to, you know.
And I, yeah, now I understand your question. Yes, there are, those assignments are being made uh, as well. A lot of the, when, when the recruitment was being done, the, the priority at the beginning of it was to get these people, um, signed up and trained, put them into a region within, within our system. And then, once they've gone through training, um, I looked through the spreadsheet last night. Most people have been assigned to a location now and there are some that are still have, have a regional one, but those assignments now are being made and those people will be contacted.
So they should be expecting to hear like in the next day and the next, I mean, when, when.
I'll, I'll get that information, uh, to you to see when the, when the final assignments are, are going to be completed and everyone will be um, uh, contacted.
Just, I, yeah, I just wanted to reinforce that because I have heard from some folks who just said, well, I'm not sure if they're even going to need me because I haven't, you know, I haven't heard anything further. So, um, that's the reason for the ask.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, are you done, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Hausman?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Baron, you may want to check your email. I, I was just checking mine as you were talking and, and I was copied on an email that was sent to you about long wait times in the north end of the county right now. So I went on the map, on the app rather, to check. And with the exception of the one at Ponce, everyone that's got a long wait time is in North County. And everywhere else says zero wait time. So I don't know if there really is a sixty-five minute wait at, um, Alfred Library or not, um, but it could be some technical problem with the app. So if you just get a look, check into that. Um, but every, every location in the North County has got a long wait time on the app right now.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, there is one item that we'll take up in executive session. That is, there's a situation developing, uh, which may lead to some litigation with Senate District Thirty-nine and I'll bring that to everyone's attention, uh, during the executive session. So, if Madam CEO, anything else? We are in at this time?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Uh, what is it here? One, it's approaching one forty-five. I want to entertain a motion to recess for lunch, um, discussions of real estate. What else? Litigation and personnel. All right, Commissioner Hausman? Yes? Yeah, motion is to recess.
He, he needs a motion.
Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Will one of you all please second his motion that he made?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, now, it is, what time is it? What time?
I believe about, you're going to have the other discussion. By two thirty?
You're going to send us the call in and in the, uh, agenda and everything?
The call in was already sent this morning. But Jessica?
Okay, I'll dig back through and find it, um.
You just, I'll send it again to you. She just sent it again as a reminder, but y'all have the agenda. I'll send it right now, Commissioner.
There, I did, just came over. Thank you very much.
So, what time again?
What time? My watch is fast.
I said three thirty.
What?
Two thirty.
To resume regular.
Oh, to reason, no, we can do that in.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Two o'clock?
Two o'clock, two PM. Okay, two PM, thank you. We, we all.
There's nobody on that you call from.
There's nothing there?
It's only one person, two.
Oh, okay.
Just give him a minute. You were really...
I entertain a motion to resume the regular order of business. Commissioner Callan, roll, Madam President.
Welcome back, Commissioners. We're going to call roll. Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Hausman. Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mark A. Arrington, Jr. And Commissioner Joe Carn.
Present.
Thank you. All right, you ready with the items from executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to have a motion to approve the representation in the matter discussed under executive session agenda number two.
So moved.
Our Commissioner Hausman.
This was number one.
Number two.
Number two, yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight.
In regards to the matter discussed under executive session agenda, item number three, we'd like to authorize the chairman to sign the settlement agreement reached by the parties in the matter of Karen Loda versus Fulton County, Georgia, et al., Superior Court of Fulton County, civil action file number 2019 CB 219367, and for the amount of $77,750.
So moved.
All right, I'll second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes six eight zero eight.
I have no further matters to discuss, Chairman.
Okay, and the other item from executive session. My motion is to approve the Board of Commissioners. This is a nomination motion. The Board of Commissioners utilizing the executive search firm of Baker Tilly LOP has concluded its search for the clerk of the commission. I move that we approve the consideration of Tiny Greer for the position of clerk to the commission in accordance with OCGA 50-18 at 72A11.
Second. Sorry.
All right, members of the public may review the qualifications of the candidate for the clerk to the commission on the county's website. At the Board of Commissioners' next meeting on Wednesday, November 4, 2020, the board will take a final vote. All right, properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. Congratulations.
Next item. Next item, next item.
Next item.
Bottom page 11. Two zero dash zero seven five three. Request eradication of countywide emergency procurement.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second. Any questions? All right, Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. Two zero dash zero seven five four, finance. Presentation, review, and approval of the October 21st, 2020 budget sounding.
What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
I'll second. Any questions? None, let's vote. Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And motion passes six eight. On page 12. Two zero dash zero seven five five, real estate and asset management. Request approval to increase spending authority to provide additional maintenance repairs and engine replacement on transport buses for the sheriff department. Repair from specialized heavy equipment for public works departments and repairs on administrative vehicles.
Move approval.
I properly moved the second and the vote, please. Ms. Hausman.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Harrington. Mr. Carn.
Yes.
Yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. Two zero dash zero seven five six, real estate and asset management. Request approval to increase spending authority to provide additional onsite general landscaping, maintenance, and lawn care services at the Fulton County Jail on Friday.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just noted there are lots of items on our agenda, most of which are within consent agenda for this particular vendor aggregating well over $700,000. Interesting that they're not all under a single contract, but I'm sure there's a good reason for that. But with that comment, I'll go ahead and move approval on this slight increase in the spending authority for this item.
Okay, I'll second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman.
I'm yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. Two zero dash zero seven five seven, real estate and asset management. Request approval to increase spending authority to provide print fences, corrective maintenance repairs at the South Fulton District Jail at Union City. And this is with the corrected amount of $150,856.05.
Move approval.
Properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. Two zero dash zero seven five eight, information technology. Request approval of a statewide contract to provide telecommunications services and products countywide.
And this is a statewide contract, all right? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Even though AT&amp;T can't get my TV to work, I guess I'll vote yes on this.
All right, Commissioner Hall. Vice Chair Harrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And motion passes five eight zero eight.
Continue.
On page 13, under Health and Human Services, two zero dash zero seven five nine, Public Works. Request approval of the lowest responsible bidder to provide resurfacing of growth in the Fulton Industrial District.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Hausman.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Harrington. Carn.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight.
Continue.
Under arson laparries, two zero dash zero seven six zero, laparries. Request approval to extend any existing contract. It's open word audio materials.
For addition. Yes, Commissioner Morris.
Question on this and the next few. Often when we extend these, it's because there's been a delay in reprocurement. Is that what's causing the delay here? I did not see the reason for these in the materials.
I had the same question. Who is...
Alicia's out there.
Alicia's on the other side. Ms. Strong Whitaker.
Dr. Rochelle can help us answer that, Mr. Chairman, is that okay?
Yes, Dr. Rochelle.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Morris, yes, this will extend the service provision for these items until a procurement is put out in collaboration with the purchasing department.
But we knew these were, it's always the question with these extensions, we knew they were, they were expiring. Why wasn't the reprocurement done on a timely basis?
Commissioner, the library staff, because they've had a lot of issues, they weren't able to, they wanted to redo the, the specifications, they want to make some significant changes to how they're delivering the services and some other things, and they have not had the time to get those new specifications to us as of yet. And so they wanted to extend and at least get through the end of the year so they could get some new permits to us based on new ways of delivering services, changing some things around, and so that's what we're waiting on.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, these are all extensions, run through these quickly, on this one, I'll move approval.
Mr. Chairman. Could we lump these four library items together?
Yes, that's what I was going to suggest. Any objections, these are all extensions, and you've heard the explanation, if there are no objections, these one, two, three, four. Madam Clerk, would you sound the, that isn't all four?
Yes. Two zero dash zero seven six one, request approval to extend an existing contract to provide high demand best selling titles for all library locations. Two zero dash zero seven six two, request approval to extend the contract to provide newspaper magazine subscription services for all library locations for an additional six month period. Two zero dash zero seven six three, request approval to extend an existing contract to provide adult, teens, and children books for library patrons.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve all four.
With the vendors indicated on to the.
Correct. I'll move approval, is there a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight. On page 14. Two zero dash zero six. Two zero dash zero seven six four, arts and culture. Request approval of a contract with the Johns Creek to continue performance of the multicultural performance arts center feasibility study.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Hausman.
Yes, you may recall Commissioners that this money was granted, this $250,000 was granted to the Johns Creek Art Center for them to conduct feasibility studies on a true cultural arts center. With COVID, they have been delayed in getting their work done. This is a contract extension just to allow them to do what they need to do to get this off the ground. They're working on a partnership with the city of Johns Creek. But this just gives them time, you know, they, they've really been stymied with COVID, so I hope you will favorably consider this, and I'll move approval.
I'll second and note that there's no additional money involved in this.
No, no additional money, it's just a continuation of their efforts.
Properly moved and seconded, let's vote please, Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall. Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight zero eight.
Thank you Commissioners.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Two zero dash zero seven six five, Public Works. Request approval to extend an existing contract to provide air traffic control night coverage services at Fulton County Executive Airport, Charlie Brown Field.
Mr. Chairman. Second, Mr. Chairman, question?
Questions, Commissioner Morris.
Same question on the purpose of this extension, this one's for a year, not six months. Will this be reprocured and why, why does it take a year for that?
Ms. Strong Whitaker.
Commissioner Morris, this is a FAA contract, and they opted to extend the contract. It is not a contract that we procure, we go through the FAA for this contract.
So Commissioners, this is FAA language, not the county's, it's the FAA's language to extend rather than to renew.
Oh, so if it were ours, we'd be renewing it.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move approval, is there a second?
I already did that.
Already been moved and seconded.
Second, thank you for correcting me. All right, let's vote please, Commissioner Hausman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Carn.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And motion passes six eight.
What's going on with the sound here?
He's going to check it out now, it's, it's a minor technical difficulty.
Oh, minor technical difficulties, but I hope you can hear us. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page 14, county manager presentation and discussion items. Two zero dash zero seven six six, select Fulton, and strategic update of development authority of Fulton County.
Who's doing this?
2019 Gatsby 76, recording presentation.
Mr. Nash.
Good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today. We're here to make our sort of our annual report, given the COVID and all the.
Hold on one second, so can we get to, we're having some issues with the.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Hold on, so what?
There are troubles you guys can speak.
Well, we can't hear, so what do we need to do? Here he comes, hold on. It's what?
I said, it seems to be isolated in this room.
Okay, so what's the?
Marco or Rico host, and unjoined, try to rejoin.
So give us some directions.
Give us 10 minutes, 10 minutes so we can pause if that's okay.
They'll, uh. IT needs 10 minutes Commissioners, because we can't hear, Tom.
There's not a way to, is Al next door?
No, no, I'm at my house.
Okay, we can hear Mr.
I can hear him just fine.
Just your room apparently.
Okay, so if it's just here, we're fine, let's go ahead then, so everyone else, we'll make out, we'll make do.
Well, if you need me to stop, you let me know, but we'll go ahead and proceed. Again, good afternoon, we're here today to give a kind of an update on the Development Authority Select Fulton and Workforce, and we've got a, we forward to you a slide deck, and we're really going to concentrate on about four or five slides, and I wanted to just start off by giving this sort of a highlight, what GASB is, is to remind you that that is, it stands for Governmental Accounting Standard Board, and they provide standards for how accounting should be done from government, especially, this is 77 was dealing with incentives, and it basically requires every governmental agency to report in their financial, their annual financial statements, the amount of incentives that were given during a, at current year for the county. I would remind you, a lot of these deals that we do and others do around the country are more than one year, so in our case, they're typically 10-year deals, so they burn off over a 10-year period, so that's what you're here today. You're going to hear Eileen O'Neill with EY, who's senior partner over there, who has presented before, give you a little history about that, in 2015, when the 77 came out, it seemed to us, and after talking with the county leadership and the finance, it made sense that we have somebody help gather all that information. And so the Development Authority took upon the task on behalf of the county to hire, engage Ernest and Young, and so for the past three years, they have compiled all that data, working with the tax assessors and with the county tax commissioner's office, and then we've worked with every municipality and both school boards to gather that information because it also has to be relayed to their financial statements. So Eileen will walk you through that. With that, there's a lot of gathering of economic impact and knowledge or data that we have collected, and we'll talk a little bit about the, the projects, the amount of those projects on a capital expenditure was some point, somewhere in the neighborhood of $7.3 billion that was invested in this county with these ADA deals that are in process, which represented about 5,800 construction jobs and about 31,000 new or retained jobs to Fulton County, which represented about $4.2 billion in labor income and probably about $8.2 billion in economic impact, which is very, very significant. You'll hear today that the county received, based off of those deals, what was currently being, would, would, would have been paid over that period of time, about $16 million more, a cap, more income coming into the county. There was also interesting, what you don't, a lot of times understand, that there was also $35 million of additional tax revenue as a result of those deals that came in from sales tax and other forms of taxation. The other thing that we have started tracking is sort of what, what we call of community benefits, extraordinary upgrades to county and city infrastructure, and those deals represented about $262 million of, of money that was put in to repair, upgrade systems that were county or city owned facilities. Another thing that we have been concentrating over the last several years is anytime there is a multifamily deal, we are of course, number one, adhering to every rule that any municipality has regarding affordable housing. These deals represented about 1,300 affordable units throughout Fulton County that we have touched, this is since 2019. So we are, and those, primarily those 1,300 were in the city of Atlanta, but there was 1,300 additional affordable units that are being brought on the market. You'll also hear there's about $11 million of, of additional, additional revenue to the city of Atlanta over what would have been paid with those existing properties. There was $9.4 billion more taxes paid to the Fulton County School System, and it was almost a little over $22 million that was paid to the city of Atlanta School System. So these are some very exciting numbers, and that's kind of the total picture that you will hear. After Eileen gets through, then Samir will give a presentation on sort of select Fulton and a little bit about workforce, so we're going to get through here and then we'll turn, we'll have time for questions, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Eileen.
Good afternoon Commissioners, happy to be here. Housekeeping question, do we have the slides available? Because some of the numbers I'm going to touch on, it would be helpful just to have the visual, visual graphic.
I'm sorry, Eileen, yeah, we should ask for that, I think we would like to go to slide five if we could.
We have slides, we don't have slides, but I made Samir a host, so if he has it on his computer, he can present it and share with us.
It's, it's in sire.
Samir should be on.
Yeah Darren, I'll try to pull it up here real quick, if Eileen can, you can just start.
I can get started, yeah, I just want to, it would be helpful when we touched on the waterfall slide to have that overview, so, so, good afternoon Commissioners, happy to be here, so, you know, as Al mentioned, my colleagues and I, EY, we've been helping the Development Authority of Fulton County for four years now, helping to assess the GASB 77 and economic impact results for the particular fiscal year that we've reported on as it relates to their project, and so I'll spend the next five minutes or so giving GASB 77 and economic impact highlights for their fiscal year 2019 projects. So, and so as Al mentioned, just to quickly reiterate, you know, GASB 77, what it is, it's a financial reporting requirement, it requires state and local governments to disclose what's given away in incentives for the particular reporting period. So as a result, we're in our fourth year of this mandate, so as part of its financial reporting obligation, Fulton County Finance Division must disclose the impact of not only DAFC incentive projects, but also incentive projects undertaken by the municipal economic development organizations that impact county revenues. And so since the inception of this reporting mandate, the Development Authority is taking the leadership role, engaging us to help compute the, the tax abatement figures for not only the county, but also the municipalities as it relates to the county revenue impact. And so taking on the task of assessing the municipal impact and not only eases the compliance burden for the finance division, but also for the finance divisions under each of the 15 municipalities that also have reporting obligations. And so the leadership and productivity that DAFC takes on is always very well received by the municipal, by the municipal finance divisions that we report to year over year. In addition, the Development Authority goes above and beyond what's required to, to be reported under GASB. They engage us to assess not only what's been given away in incentives, but also what's been received by way of total tax and economic impacts as a result of their projects. And as I'll have the pleasure to report on the next slide, and as Al mentioned, the AFC projects have brought in 16.2 million in net new revenue impact to the county as a result of their projects. In addition, in the spirit of transparency that GASB 77 promotes, the AFC continues to employ a robust evaluation strategy for consideration of their projects, including use of an ROI model tool that evaluates the total tax impact per project. They also prepare standard deal review packages that go to the board, the DAFC board prior to approval. They also employ policy recommendations to developers to engage female and minority business enterprises as part of new project, and they, as Al mentioned, they are tracking affordable housing compliance, and reports have shown an increase in the total affordable housing units year over year. And then to touch on that last bullet point, in 2019, DAFC projects contributed to more than $152 million in extraordinary cost for infrastructure improvements and community benefits. And so to turn to the next slide, this is what we called our waterfall slide, so what it does is it shows the total breakdown of revenues that comprise that $16.2 million in net new revenue impact. So as Al mentioned, we're looking at active projects that received an active incentive in 2019, but what this does is because the incentive award is a 10-year period, it essentially encapsulates projects that have been approved over the last 10 years. And so as you can see from the breakdown of this waterfall slide, the 3.6 million constitutes the pre-investment values, the taxes that would have been collected before the project became active or was incentivized. So these parcels of property were bringing in $3.6 million, but with the new additional investment as a result of these projects, they brought in a total of $26.4 million in ad valorem tax revenue to the county. So if you take away the 10.2 million in incentives for 2019, your total net impact is 16.2 million. And so this is the county revenue impact, it doesn't include the impact to the school districts and the other municipalities, but you know, we did, as Al mentioned, we did prepare those analyses and showed positive incremental trends for, for all the, for the schools and for city of Atlanta as well. So if you can move on to the next slide. And so what this next slide shows is a summary of the total project and tax revenue impact over the last four years. So the graph on the left, it shows the net incremental ad valorem tax impact to the county over the last four years, you can see the increasing trend year over year, and then the, and then the table to the right just shows an overall project summary trend over the last four years, whole number of projects, job commitments, capital investment, and total incentives received. And as you can see, the net tax benefit has been trending upward, and there has been a direct correlation between. and there has been a direct correlation between total number of projects, job and capex relative to the net new impact that's brought to the county. And then for the next slide, the next three slides cover our economic impact report. So in addition to providing the GASB seventy-seven computations, we also, um, assess the, the total economic impact as a result of these projects. And so what that covers is our economic impact report, it covers direct impacts, which are related to businesses receiving the incentive, indirect impacts related to suppliers in the county, induced impacts which stem from consumption-based spending by employees in the county. So employees that are spending money in restaurants, grocery stores, gas stations, and so on. And so we essentially evaluate the economic contributions, which include jobs, income, economic output and tax revenue. And so the next two slides show the overall results of the analysis. Um, and so what we're looking at is a total of eighty-eight projects that cover, um, fiscal year twenty nineteen. The total capital investment for these projects comprised seven point three billion. Um, as you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, um, it's primarily, um, the investments primarily from residential office and warehouse facilities. And then as you can see on the right-hand side of the slide, um, we're looking at total job commitments, including new and retained jobs of over thirty-one thousand. Um, the bulk of those jobs from, uh, tenants, um, within the office building project. And then the last slide provides a summary of the total economic contributions of projects receiving incentives. And so, you know, this includes not only direct impacts, but also, you know, total jobs, labor income and economic output as a result of indirect and induced impacts as well. And so for twenty nineteen, we're looking at a total contribution of nearly, uh, forty-eight thousand jobs, including both full and part-time positions, approximately four point two billion dollars in labor income, which is comprised of wages, salaries and benefits for employees. And then more than eight point two billion dollars in total economic output for Fulton County as a result of these twenty nineteen projects. So these last several slides just encapsulate just a high-level overview of our economic impact report. Uh, that full report is available and I believe it may have already been provided, um, to each of the Commissioners. Uh, if not, it will be provided shortly. So, um, with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Samir, um, to give us like. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Um, and I will be brief. We always try to take this opportunity, again, Samir Delachi, Deputy Director for Select Fulton. We'd like to take this opportunity to talk about the other two legs of the three legs that we stand on in Fulton County, which is our Economic Development Division and our Workforce Development Division. We've had some great successes in the last three hundred and sixty-five days. So briefly going through these, um, if you look at our business engagement, which is our Economic Development Team, um, we continue to succeed in terms of regional partnerships. I think it's one of our greatest strengths in representing the region, our fifteen cities, not only partnering with them, but also representing them in regional county events. Um, and some of those successes that we've been able to tap into, um, is working with Metro Atlanta Chamber, the State of Georgia, the cities and other regional counties, and bringing the twenty twenty Site Selectors Guild here in March of twenty twenty, right before, uh, the pandemic. Um, it's an elite group of site selectors that we brought in from the nation, uh, to, to host and show the region, to show all of our graces, assets, like our communities, our educational systems, and unique developments that we built recently here in Fulton County, like Mercedes-Benz stadiums and Porsche North America, inviting the governor to really give them a download of Metro Atlanta and what it has to offer. So we've been very successful in partnering with the region on that. Um, we continue to up our small business, um, efforts and investments. We worked in twenty nineteen to carry out the Empowering Entrepreneurs Conference, which provided subject matter experts and a forum to our small business, um, creators and entrepreneurs. And thank you to the support from Commissioner Arrington and getting that kicked off. In twenty twenty, obviously with the pandemic, we've reacted in partnership with the Development Authority and thanks for, um, a generous offering of one point five million dollars from the Board of Commissioners, using CARES Act funds to quickly and rapidly deploy, um, some small business loans right at the early onset of the pandemic. Um, as you know, we, we issued ninety different loans, seventy-nine, seventy-three percent of which went to minority and FEMA-owned businesses. And I will say, um, we were able to get our loans out much quicker than some of our surrounding counties that are still going through their process. So, um, hats off to Fulton County and able to deploy those funds very rapidly. Um, we've activated our marketing plan, um, and thanks to the special investment and push and advocacy that Commissioner Hausman has made during that. Um, so we've invested in new marketing tools to help build the brand of Fulton County and Select Fulton. This includes marketing documents and associated promotional materials. Many of those kind of basic items we didn't have when we first created Select Fulton. Um, and our new marketing manager, Brianna Khan, has really helped to execute on that plan, developing a new data-driven website, making sure our social media channels are active and really serve as kind of that repository for development news in Fulton County. And then during the COVID pandemic, we've reacted by sending out kind of our weekly newsletter with information around, um, CARES Act-related funding, PPP loans and other resources available to small businesses and cities to distribute, which has been a great success. Um, lastly, in economic development, we continue to do great in the company recruitment space. We still had successes despite the pandemic. Um, back in May, we announced Microsoft, which is investing seventy-five million dollars in Atlantic Station, creating fifteen hundred new jobs and taking five hundred twenty thousand square feet. Um, just to remark, that is the largest new lease of office in the United States since the pandemic. Um, and it just speaks to the, the interest and attraction we continue to see, not only for Atlanta and Fulton County, but for the southeast, um, as, as we hear about hub and spoke and decentralizing some of these major cities. Um, think about a lot of possible or, uh, promising opportunities for Fulton County to reap the benefits from that. Um, just mentioning another company, Deluxe Financial, Deluxe Financial Services Firm from Minnesota, relocated here, creating seven hundred and nine jobs and ten million dollars in investment in Sandy Springs. Uh, many of these companies are working multi-jurisdictional, so they're looking at many cities here in Fulton County. And they're very pleased to have an Economic Development Office they can lean on, um, to help them guide through the process of understanding communities and understanding where they can make those investments. Switching over to workforce development, um, again, uh, um, a big thank you to Chairman Rob Pitts and to, um, Alton Adams for really helping us shepherd not only the, the revamp of the workforce board, but office to our service delivery model. Um, and so we've made all those changes back in twenty nineteen. Now we're really reaping the benefits of those changes. So in twenty nineteen, we saw seventy-two hundred job seekers in our training centers. We provided over four hundred adults and youths, um, with funding to pursue their new, uh, career trajectories in terms of training. Um, eighty-nine percent of those people who received training funding received or found employment within two quarters after finishing training. So we're not measuring kind of these binary things, uh, did they just get a credential? Did they just get employment? We're also looking at things of what are their overall outcomes? So if you look at those eighty-nine percent of which received employment, they saw an average increase in wage of over twelve thousand dollars. So these are not just, they're getting credentials, just getting a job. These are past two successes for these individuals. So very thankful to your leadership, Chairman Pitts, in helping us, uh, uh, turn the ship around. Um, ongoing with our digital literacy program related to the CARES Act funding, we received that, um, it's been a great, successful program. To date, we've served seven hundred and ninety residents outside the city of Atlanta with over twenty percent already securing employment. As you all remember, Goodwill of North Georgia, which is the, uh, the largest provider and partner in this train, digital literacy training, has partnered with the Metro Atlanta Chamber in order to provide and help with those employment connections. And so the way we pitched this is the nonprofit, the private sector and public sector really come together to, to solve some of the structural and systemic workforce development challenges that we've had, especially around digital literacy. Um, so a very successful program. We brought on a lot of different partners and we'll come back to report on that. And if for anyone who's trying to connect with the program, I recommend you go to careerconnector.org, which is Goodwill's, uh, intake website, or you can call eight four four three four four WORK to connect with Goodwill and get enrolled into that program. And then lastly, I'll talk about, um, a, a special investment that we've made into our South Fulton facility for, uh, workforce staff and also workforce clientele that come through. And again, special thank you to Dick Anderson, the County Manager, and Ellis Kirby and really helping to drive and lead this effort in getting it over the fish, excuse me, the finish line. Um, so we've transitioned our office from the South Fulton DFAX facility. We were kind of a guest over there in an office suite. And we have moved into the South Fulton Annex there in Union City on Stonewall Tales, right across the door. Um, we have a state-of-the-art, brand-new facility, as you can see in the pictures down there. Not only does this afford us more capacity to serve our residents via our resource room, but a more business-friendly environment for our residents. Because you'll remember, part of the reason why we rolled workforce development under Select Fulton was not only to complement our economic development efforts, but to take that program away from just an exclusively mindset of a social service and really elevate and empower the individuals to take on their, their next career trajectories. And I think now the center, the team, our board really reflects and, and coincides with all of that. Um, and we continue to meet with individuals, um, right now via appointments. Anyone looking to receive our services, please go to ATLworks.org. That's where you can find and sign up for ReOa Services. Um, that concludes my part of the presentation. I think it concludes, um, our overall presentation. We'll entertain any questions from the board.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have some questions and comments, Mr. Chairman.
So do I.
Followed by Commissioner Hausman.
Okay. Well, well, first of all, thank you all, I, um, Eileen, Al, Samir and, and Steve. You've been here all day and I thought about it, I would have suggested we take you up front so you wouldn't have to sit through all this, all that you sat through. But thank you all for, for being there. Um, uh, really, I got four, four things to, to comment on. Um, one is, uh, I, I've said this before, um, uh, on, on, Eileen, on your slide about job creation. I've said often that, that creating office space doesn't by itself create jobs. I mean, it creates the, it creates the construction jobs, but, but to build a, a spec office building, um, you know, a couple hundred thousand square feet or something, that, that's not what brings the jobs. It, it provides some space if, if a company wants to, to come to Atlanta and take that space. But it's, it's whatever causes that company to come, it, it creates the jobs. It's, it's not really the creation of the, the office space, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll continue to, to have that interesting debate, I guess, for, for a long, long time. Um, second point is, um, and, and Al, I know we've, Steve, we've talked about this forever. Um, the, um, the question that, that my constituents, especially in Buckhead, have been raising for years. And, and now the city of Atlanta and Atlanta Public Schools, um, which is, which has voted recently, as we all know, to, to, um, ask the Development Authority of Fulton County to stop doing bonds for title deals in, in the city of Atlanta. There's this feeling that a lot of these projects would have happened without this abatement. And, and I've recognized that you can never know that for sure. Um, but, um, but there's, there's obviously a growing suggestion that we, we need to ask that question each time, really, really, um, with a great deal of intensity. Um, and, and understanding that, that if the project would have happened anyway because of market demand, as we saw with that one office building in Buckhead, where the board very wisely voted not to do the abatement, uh, bonds for title deal and, and they immediately announced they're going ahead with the project anyway. There's just this growing feeling, um, amongst my constituents in Buckhead particularly and, and, uh, and, and with the city council and, and APS, that a lot of these projects would have happened anyway. And, um, so it's a shame that in, in those individual cases, if we knew that for sure, um, that, that we gave the, uh, the abatement. Again, I, I understand it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing to know and you, and you, you might say no and, and, and have the project say, well, we're not, we're not moving ahead. And we made a mistake then, uh, but, uh, there is that growing feeling that often, um, we say yes and, and unnecessarily because it would have happened without that. I, and, and I guess my, my last, my last comment is, um, is to thank the Development Authority for Fulton County for, for Al, your leadership and Steve, your leadership as, as Vice Chair for, for years, in the, in the, um, efforts you all have made for increased transparency and public comment and, and, uh, and the fact sheets being on the website in advance and, um, and, and that's been noticed and appreciated. Um, and so I want to publicly thank you for all of that. And Al, uh, I know we're going to have some opportunities to say goodbye in a more formal way, but you have been a terrific, um, public servant here and, uh, and a great guy. And, and the way you so patiently put up with my gadflyness, is that a word, gadflyness? Anyway.
We'll take it.
The, uh, the, uh, the way you've put up so patiently and professionally with, with, with my comments and, and involvement in this, uh, has just been, um, a real tribute to you and your professionalism. And I trust you're going to hang around for a long time in some capacity here to continue to offer your expertise and, uh, and professionalism. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hausman?
Yes, um, uh, thank you for such a thorough and great report. Um, it's, it's just a snapshot, but it really is an uplifting snapshot, um, that I think we all could use about now after what we've been through the last few months especially. Um, you know, in my time on the Fulton County Commission, um, especially when I first got here, we were in the deep throes of a recession and the work that was done by the Development Authority, I think was a catalyst for the entire region for the recovery that happened. And, and this report bears fruit of that because a lot of these projects go back to that time period. So I just want to thank you for all you've done over the years. But thank you especially for showing, showing the reasons why the incentives are given in the first place. I, I think that when the GASB seventy-seven requirements were announced, you know, if we had just shown what we gave away, it would have seemed like we weren't reaping any benefits from it and the school systems didn't reap any benefits and, and the cities in, in our county didn't reap any benefits. And we've shown that they do. And Commissioner Morris, I appreciate your comments about the what-if. Um, having sat through a lot of those Development Authority meetings, you know, most of the developers today anyway, maybe not ten years ago, the what-if was, how am I going to get my financing without this help? Now the what-if includes infrastructure improvements and amenities that are offered that benefit the community, um, with trails and parks and various things like that, cleaning up brownfields. So, um, I think the Development Authority plays a crucial role. Um, and I think in the next couple of years, as we try to recover again, uh, that will indeed be the case. So, um, happy to see this information. Um, Mr. Nash, I know in the past we've shared this with our partners, Atlanta and the school systems. You are planning to do that again with this, I, I assume.
Yes, we have, uh, we will continue to offer to meet with the school board and with the, uh, whoever else from cities or whatever to do that. But on a regular basis, we have done that and provided that information.
Well, I know it's difficult.
The information has been provided already to their accounting or their financial people because it has to be included in their financial statements. So we're more than happy to do that.
Um, well, I know in the past we've, we've visited them in person. I don't know if that's feasible in this environment either. Um, but let me know if, if, if you do that, I'd be happy to go and support you. Um, but then on a personal note, um, you know, I, I just, I appreciate all you've done. Um, I just hate to see you go. I've said that before. Um, no one's irreplaceable, but you have done so much for Fulton County. And, um, I just want to thank you for that. Um, we look forward to sending you off right in some way. Um, and, um, hopefully it'll be in an environment where we can have a lot of folks with us to support you and to thank you for all you've done.
Well, thank, thank you.
If I may, Chairman Pitts, can I just respond to Commissioner Morris's comments very briefly?
Yes, sir.
So I'm Steve Broadbent for the Commissioners. Don't ma, don't know me. I serve as Vice Chairman on the, uh, Beltway Authority Board under Chairman Bob Shaw. And I, I'm really grateful for, uh, Commissioner Morris's and Commissioner Hausman's participation in our meetings. I know in the pre-pandemic days when we met in person, it was always great to see them or their staff, uh, given the structure of technology. Today, I'm honestly not sure if they're participating. I'm assuming they are. But I, I do appreciate, um, uh, the debate with Commissioner Morris on, um, you know, the appropriateness of certain, uh, of tax incentives on certain projects. Um, I just want to state that I think we're probably having more vigorous debate within the board than we've had in. I just want to state that I think we're probably having more vigorous debate within the board than we've had in the past, probably not dissimilar from the Board of Commissioners. A lot of that debate takes place among individual members of the board prior to the meeting. I don't think we've had this level of debate, you know, in the nine years or so that I've been serving on the Development Authority Board. You know, I think we also adhere, you know, very strict measures in the tax threshold that we seek to attain in the projects. So, you know, I think we have common objectives in mind. It's always difficult to tell whether or not the project would go forward without the incentives, but it's certainly ever-present in our mind. And we want to ensure that we're taking into, you know, in heart the residents' interest, the commissioners' interest as we make these decisions. So I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Nash and team. Madam Clerk?
Bottom of page fourteen, Commissioners' Presentation and Discussion Items 2-0-0767, Invest Atlanta Board of Directors, September seventeenth, 2020 Meeting Summary, sponsored by Commissioner Morris.
Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, this is, this is just the usual summary of the actions taken by the Invest Atlanta Board at its September seventeenth meeting. It describes some of the, some of the actions that were taken, the amounts, the projects, and that sort of thing. And if anybody has any questions about any of those, I'd be delighted to get more information to you.
All right. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page fifteen, 2-0-0768, Discussion, Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, October fourteenth, 2020, CEO Report, sponsored by Commissioner Morris.
Mr. Morris?
Usually, I present the CEO's report to the most recent Beltline Board meeting. This time, we had a big presentation on the equitable development policy of the Beltline led by Nanette Sykes, the Beltline's Equity, I've forgotten her exact title, but Equity Officer. And it was fascinating to me to see some of the maps on the average household income in areas around the Beltline, population increases and decreases around the Beltline, and any number of other interesting factors. It's quite an elaborate report, in-depth report. It took quite a bit of work to put together. And for those of you who are particularly interested in the Beltline and represent any part of Atlanta, although the Beltline impacts the entire region, I encourage you to read that. And again, I'm delighted to get more information to you. The Beltline staff is happy to come and make a presentation on this if we desire that at one of our subsequent meetings. So with that, I'll just encourage you to take a look at that fascinating report on how the Beltline is being developed and impacting neighborhoods. And again, sometimes how divided we are in the city economically and otherwise.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk?
And back on the agenda, bottom of page five, we move for separate consideration as requested by Commissioner Hall, 2-0-0729, Finance, Ratification of the September 2020 Grant Activity Report.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. Yes. Was that me echoing?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sounds like I'm okay now.
You're okay now.
Okay, excellent. So on 0729, I just wanted to ask about two of the items, let me see. The CDBG item that's on there for $1.7 million.
Okay, Dr. Rochelle, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Commissioner Hall, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Rochelle, let me just give you all of them, so you can just cover all of them. It's the CDBG item for 1.7. It's the Provider Relief Fund from the Department of HHS for $24,000. And the other HHS, which says Provider Relief Fund, Phase Three, General Distribution for, to be determined. And I just wanted to know why it says to be determined on that one. But these are good because it looks like it's COVID funding that the federal government had that they're actually spreading around, so I just wanted confirmation on that.
Commissioner, this is Akim. I'm going to cover the last two items that you mentioned. And those are the ones on Provider Relief Funds. This, we are applying for the grants so that we can use them to cover our lost revenue for some of our programs. The one that says TBD, we just do not have the amount yet, but we want to submit the application. And then at that time, we'll be able to, I mean, they'll be able to provide us now what amount can be allocated to the county. But at this time, we do not have an amount that they're going to be providing us, but we do know we're going to get something. So we thought that rather than giving up the opportunity, we'll rather submit the application and then, you know, see what, you know, they'll provide us or they'll give us. And we can come back if that is what you prefer. We can come back and present the document to you after the award is received.
That's great. I thought that it was some extra funding, and you could actually, you said you could actually come back?
Yeah, we can. When we receive the award, we can bring that item back for your approval, if that's your preference.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome. And Dr. Rochelle will cover the one for the $1.7 million.
Good afternoon again, Commissioner Hall. This item is for the CDBG program. It's an additional allocation of $1.7 million that can be awarded to cities for infrastructure-related projects and public service projects to mitigate the impact of COVID.
That's outstanding. I couldn't see any more details other than what was on the spreadsheet. So thank you for that additional information, Dr. Rochelle.
You're welcome.
Dr. Rochelle? If I could get, could I get a copy of that detail as well?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else? With the motion to ratify, I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Housman?
That's just a motion to accept the report, correct?
Ratify.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chair Arrington? Christa Carn?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
The motion passes, six eight, zero eight. We have an add-on item.
What add-on item?
Page two of the add-on memo, 2-0-0770, Administrative Hearing Officers, Vice Chairman Arrington has nominated Otis Williams Esquire to replace Calvin Blackburn III to a two-year term.
I'll move approval. The second? Christa Carn, I'll take that as a second. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Christian Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Chair Arrington?
Mr. Carn? Yes.
And I vote yes.
The motion passes, six eight, zero eight.
Any other matter come before us today?
I have no further items.
All right, no further items that come before us today. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn without objection. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation today.